Like about it.
You okay, Dean? It's been a Monday. Did he do it?
All right, I'll go ahead and get started, but is Clay on his way? Okay, all right, good enough. We want to follow this meeting to order. This is our city council meeting for Monday, March the 10th, 2025. Ask you to stand with us for the invocation and follow the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we love you today. We so thankful, God, for your love towards us as a people, Lord, as a city, as a community. We pray, God, for your wisdom and guidance as we have our council meeting. We pray for your anointing, Lord, and favor to be on these councilmen and all that bring, uh, Lord, the information that we need to make decisions with. So, God, we just thank you, Lord. We give you the glory and praise for everything you do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, be sure to pull your mics up pretty tight. I know we don't have a problem hearing each other up here, but they have a problem in the back. Okay. Uh-oh, somebody may have pulled it too close. Okay, well, I'm gonna begin with a, uh, a proclamation, and this was for the Red Cross. Go ahead and begin. Whereas during the American Red Cross Month each March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of the Phoenix Springs and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors, and whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of the Phoenix Springs, whose simple acts of kindness through the American Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Claire Barton, who founded the organization more than a hundred and forty years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. Since nineteen seventeen, the American Red Cross of Northwest Florida has helped thousands of people, whether it is providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accidental victims, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease, and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by the crisis around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are vital to our community's resilience. Now therefore, I, Bob Campbell, virtue of authority vested in me, as mayor of the city of the Phoenix Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-five as American Red Cross Month, and in the city of the Phoenix Springs, encourage all citizens to recognize this month in honor of all those who fulfill Claire Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and to reach out and support its humanitarian mission of the American Red Cross." Is Tony in the room? There he is. Tony, come on back here, one. All right. You doing well?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Got it?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, we'll first go to the consent agenda, and if, uh, we would entertain a motion to approve as written, or if you want something pulled off of it, please let us know at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion second. Any questions? And now we are at...
Mr. Harrison.
Okay. Ms. Harrison.
All right.
All in favor, say aye.
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 As Carrie, thank you very much. And now to the regular agenda. Kobe, are there any changes?
No, Mayor.
Motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 As Carrie, thank you very much, and we'll go right straight to our city manager with four C, one.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Friday, I met with county administration and county legal to go over the interlocal agreement for the senior center. So, uh, if all recall, the Walton County Board of County Commissioners voted five oh to bring back and update interlocal, uh, where the city would take over daily operations of their life enrichment senior center. So, the agreement is, um, pretty much the same as we had with Tri-County, switching out the C with Tri-County. Um, the county will provide the facility, the maintenance of that facility, both inside and out, uh, along with janitorial services. Um, they have the same funding language, this discretionary, just like the city's is, but we do expect to keep that. And then they will donate the van they purchased in their budget year to the city for senior center use. Uh, the city's requirements would be, obviously, employment of the individuals to run the center, uh, the fuel for the van, and the insurance for the van as well. And then there are some other internal things, operating manual, annual reports that we will do internally. Uh, the funds, the funds that have been given to Tri-County, we will work with Tri-County, those will come straight to the city, um, unless there's an objection from the county, but I don't believe that there is, we'll work that out. And then this Tri-County also had a reserve for the senior center. We were gonna ask that comes to city as well, replace phones, computers, TVs, uh, things of that line. Uh, the term is for three years, starting on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and continue until September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight, and may be renewed for an additional three years upon a written assessment of both parties. Um, this was at the request of the county administrator, and I didn't see an objection to that. We have been doing the past, uh, annual deals. So, that is the agreement before you, uh, with the county.
Motion to approve senior center local.
Second.
All right, motion second. Questions? Comments? From anyone? All in favor, say aye.
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 As Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Long the way, boy.
That will be on the board of county commissioners' agenda for tomorrow. It's currently only consent agenda. I will be present in case it gets pulled, but, uh, it is only consent agenda.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to, uh, four C two.
Mayor, uh, if you all recall, the city came into possession of property, uh, along Baldwin Avenue between Twenty-first and Twenty-second Street, through a code violation agreement we had with the property owner, uh, and another individual. Um, that property did have a bunch of mobile homes on it. The staff has done a great job this week tearing those down, is currently removing the debris. Um, so they've been very quick about it and done a clean job. So, we will finish that over the next week or so, getting that completely squared away. Um, so it was my intent to bring this before y'all, to see what it is the council would like to do with that piece of property. I did have someone call and inquire about selling it, if that's something you and I will be interested in doing. So, really, I guess, we're two options, either sell it on a sealed bid on the market, or, um, retain the property for future use until the council sees fit. So, it's, uh, totally up to, to, to the council, and just looking for direction on that property. Uh, Councilman Valley pointed it out, I took some time, did the map. Property praiser says it's zero point one two acres. It is not, it is, was basically one point zero three, one point zero two acres, so, for reference.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, consider putting it out on the open market for sealed bid with a, a minimum reserve that is, uh, appropriate to cover all costs incurred by the city up to this point.
We have a motion. Second. All right, second. Go ahead.
Uh, I believe it's too premature to sell that property. I think it aligns, uh, in the future with some things that we're planning on doing, like the bike path, uh, potential parking issues that we're, you know, that the CRA is looking at, um, if Amtrak, if, if we can ever get the Amtrak to come in here. I just think it might have some value in the future. It might just be too premature to put it on the open market.
Anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you. So, um, I, I, I tend to agree that we might see a, a value increase if we held on it. My, my reasoning for that is the odd shape of the property. The fact that we're removing, removing the largest blight at this point will mean that if it does transfer, the CRA is gonna get, one, the CRA is gonna get the benefit, if we, if we sold it now, because it go into private hands instead of our hands. Two, um, I think once you remove the highest blight element within a neighborhood, you're gonna see an increase in values. But if we, if we're the first one in at the lowest price point, it's gonna eliminate that opportunity for a greater appreciation over time. Uh, I see potential for someone to pick up one or, one or even two ninety-eight furnished parcels, uh, which probably would have a decent price if someone was willing to sell, and it would actually increase that property value significantly. I, I don't think it has any use as, as parking or, or, or an Amtrak feature or anything like that. It's just too far out of the core area that we really need to take care of. But I do think that once we eliminate the highest blight element, give the, give the area a little chance, just give it a chance to breathe, see what it does in terms of value, see if someone else picks up one of those other pieces. I just hate to see us be the ones that sold the, the cheapest component, then everyone profits off of all, all of our work and we see none of it. Um, I'm willing to test it, but if we do, I, I, I would ask, if, if we do test it, that we at least do an assessment before we go straight to bid. I would, I would wait and at least internally get a number that we wanna hold as a bottom, because if we just put it for an open bid with no bottom...
Right. We always reserve the right to reject any and all bids for any or no reason. Just because you bid it does not mean you're required. And all of our standard bids include the city reserves the right to reset, to reject any and all bids.
Correct. Uh, my ask would be that we just at least, uh, establish, even if it's just internally, determine a minimum price that we'd be willing to accept, um, so that we don't go into it cold and, and then have a big debate at, at the dais.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, certainly hearing those comments and, and, and agree, I, I think we should establish some sort of minimum quote-unquote reserve that we, we expect to see out of the property. But removing, removing, while we have removed and remediated the blight, if we hold on to it, we're effectively taking it off the tax rolls. And what, what capital does the city have to turn around and improve this property or actually do something with this property? From my perspective, there, there's little to none. So, why not put the, the property back on the open market? It will eventually come back into the open tax rolls, and then, then to that point, everybody's winning, right? We, we, the city accomplished what it set out to do by remediating the blight, but let's not take it off the tax rolls and let it just sit there as a vacant property. If there's people interested in it, which we, we've already received one inquiry, it is prime, prime property. Um, I, I think that we should, we should keep it out there on the market. Let's, let's not hold on to property and ma- make it a policy that we're constantly holding on to property.
I, Kobe, what is the just value and the taxable base out of it right now as it, as it was?
The adjust value and assessed value as it was is sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Yep. And the ta- and the tax base, how much was the tax?
Oh, wow, I'll have to pull that up.
I think it was only a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, the land value is only a thirty thousand, though, will be wiped as slightly clean. Now, there is something to consider on that property. We do have, uh, a gas, uh, structure, a gas connection point there, making sure that we have enough to take care of that, any future expansion. Um, and then also identify, figure out what that slice of, of, and it's not an easement, that, that slice, uh, that runs east-west on the north edge of it. Um, just, I think we just, a little bit of homework there, just figure out what it is, make sure we got enough room for what we need in the future. You know, we know that that thirty thousand will be low, uh, so, uh, yeah, that's...
Yeah, it's insignificant, to my point.
So, a little homework on that.
Again, uh, if, if we have, if we have standard clause that says we can reject any and all bids, why don't we just go out and see what it looks like? I, I, I just don't see the city holding on to property. I mean, we, that was one of the things we did when I first got elected, is we, we pulled up all the, the property that was just vacant and not being used, and we tried to dispose of as much of it as we can. And the city shouldn't be a land bank, and especially a piece of property like this, it shouldn't sit vacant on, on, you know, the idea that we might build a train station one day.
The two thousand and twenty-four trim notice was eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-four cents.
Oh, thanks. Um, Kobe, do we have a list of all of the lands that the city owns that we were gonna evaluate? I thought that was coming back to us.
We do. So, uh, staff did create an Excel spreadsheet with all city parcels, and we got some, the information. I will forward that to you, working on trying to put that on a map so we can visualize it, seeing that parcel ID and hitting them individually, gonna lose...
Councilman, would you be willing to wait until he brings that back so we could look at that, and, and, and if, if that's the, you know, stance that we're gonna take, maybe we need to look at multiple properties at the same time versus just this one?
I, Councilwoman, I, I hear your request, but I don't think there's no harm in any foul in, in at least putting it out for sealed bid, because again, we can reject all, all, so let's just see what the interest is. I, we may come back and it may be a thirty thousand dollar bid, and we say, nope, we're not interested. I don't, I don't think the city should lose money on this, but at the same time, I just hate to see vacant lots sit around the city. And, and to a certain extent, the process for, uh, issuing the RFP and the sealed bids and everything else is gonna take time, and that would allow for this other request, requesting information to come back as well.
Mayor.
Yes.
Kobe, how much, how much money do we have invested in that now that we acquired it and the code violations that were racked up and the time and, and materials that our folks have put into that, taken it?
So, our average, uh, the city's average investment in that from the code perspective is twenty-five hundred dollars, simply what ours is per property, because it's more so administrative task and duties. Um, but in terms of acquiring the property, we have no pro- we have no cash in acquiring the property. Again, it was part of a...
But did we forego some cash?
Agreement we had with a violator. Um, no, so, at the time of that property, it was a three-way agreement between the former property owner and the current property owner, who had received that through, uh, quiet title or, uh, deed. And so, we worked with them. Uh, the city received a payment, uh, a little over forty-four thousand dollars, um, from the violator and received a deed to the property. The person who owned it got paid by the violator, so the city did not spend any money in acquiring the property. Uh, we did a three-way agreement, which we thought was a win-win for everyone involved, and so that's how we got here.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. Yeah, we, we, we might not really have anything to lose by test for the waters and see what's out there. I'd just like to give us some, us to have some time to discuss the possible uses for the city. Um, I don't have any identified in my mind, uh, but, you know, first thing that comes to mind, not that that's a suitable place necessarily, but the dog park was, uh, was, was something, um, I don't see that as a great place for it, being right next to Highway ninety, but just saying, there may be something that, this has just turned around, right? This has just, just happened. So, we, we haven't had a conversation about the potential benefits of owning it, something we could do with it. Because if we have to, at some point, buy property in the future, uh, we're not gonna get it for any less than we got that for. That's for certain. We'll have to, we'll have to buy it most likely. Um, so it could potentially be a valuable piece of property to us in use, usage. But, but, you know, if you test it your way, if that's what it wants to do, put the bid out, uh, I, I don't, I don't mind that, but I, I would certainly like a little time to discuss it and look at it. All right, I have a motion second. Any other comments?
Mayor, please. Yeah. Good. Um, I, I would say, the thing that, the only thing that gives me significant pause is the fact that there was interest. That's very different than just waiting. Um, once there's interest, it, you don't, you don't pass up interest. I mean, I, 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 I agree there. Um, I, I've stated the things that I think would be interesting to consider and possibilities. It wouldn't hurt my feelings if it didn't work out, uh, with that party. But I, I just wanna say, the fact that there is interest kinda changes my math about it, but, uh, and I also don't like the idea of the city collecting properties.
You have a comment?
I, I can go either way with this one. Um, I, I don't have, I don't hold, uh, hard feelings, but we can put it out for bids and see what comes back, because at least we can reject it if, if it's not what we determine we wanna do at that time, so. But I also see what the councilwoman is saying as well, and like what Mr. Harrison was saying with, uh, the dog park ideas is also that, I don't, I don't have any hard pronoun going out for bid at this point.
You know, the, the only comment I was gonna make was, uh, I would like to stay away from a minimal, let the market tell us what the minimum is. That's what I'm saying.
I agree.
You know, because once you said it, everybody in the world knows it. And, uh, I've watched us do land deals in the past, and I thought, man, this is not fair. We have to lay all our cards on the table. Well, you don't have to lay your cards on the table on this one. You got, let the market determine what, the, what it's worth at the minimum. So, all right, with that, we have a motion. And a second, any other comment?
Lisa Sorrells, City of the Phoenix Springs Dog Park Task Force. I've heard mention of the dog park twice now. That is an unrealistic location for future use for the dog park. There is no sidewalks. Yes, it is on Highway ninety, but we are looking at another spot on Highway ninety. However, that location does have sidewalks on the back end of it, and it already has parking, so I fully am not in favor of even considering that for full, for future, for dog park. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
As Carrie, thank you very much.
Mayor, can I, can I make a note or a comment on that one?
Yeah.
I think that we should seriously consider, you know, long sl- land swaps for parcels that might be desirable to us as part of any bid applications. So, I think we should consider not just payments and cash, but if there's land that's more, uh, amenable to us, a better fit, that would be a good bo- dog park location. I think we should consider different than just monetary contributions.
Thank you. All right, Kobe, we'll go to, uh, four C three.
Thank you, Mayor. This, we're requesting to issue RFQ two thousand twenty-five oh one AP. This is for the Hangers eighteen nineteen twenty development project, which is on the east side of the airport. So, this is for design, engineering, and construction phase services of municipal airport Hangers eighteen nineteen twenty development project. So, that's, that's the motion I asked for, and I do have a statement, uh, if we receive a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion is second. Comments? Comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. If I'm, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, uh, two quick things. One, uh, uh, I never wanted to be there, but I know some people had some, uh, schedule conflicts, but I wanna thank Councilman Scott, yours, Councilman Harrison, and the mayor for being present at the Triumph Board Meeting. Good news, the city did receive approval on step one, uh, for four point two two nine million dollars for this project, through Triumph Gulf Coast, which is a big deal. Um, and I think it's worth noting and taking a second to, to recognize the efforts by the city council and the input into this, and what we're doing for the city, and what you all have a vision for the city. So, I definitely thank you all, deserve a round of applause for that, and the, the work we've done to get that funding for the city. So, I do definitely thank y'all, deserve that.
All right. All right, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
As Carrie, thank you very much. All right, Kobe, we'll move on to four C four.
Thank you, Mayor. So, four C four is RFQ two thousand twenty-five oh one PW, continuing professional engineering services. The city went out for bid for engineering services. We did receive twelve responses to that bid. Uh, y'all recall, the council decided to be the committee to review, to interview, interview, and select these firms. So, you were giving all, giving all these in the packet as long, as well as Google Drive to review, so we were just looking for the firms the council would like to interview. Um, the number is up to all of you. Once you select those firms, staff will work to find a date suitable for everyone in the parties involved to set that up.
Trying to get it, please.
All right, so what was the, what, what were you wanting from the council as far as the minimum?
Looking for, uh, the, I guess, the firms the council would like to interview, so we can set those up, those interviews up.
No particular number.
No, sir, that's totally up to the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, I, I guess I'd like to maybe just kinda open the conversation with, I think we should, we should either pick, you know, three firms or five firms. Um, I know from past experience, sitting through, through those, those, uh, presentations is gonna be lengthy, um, and I think it's, I think it's appropriate that we either select three or five and kinda pare it down from there. Um, and then my other suggestion would be, once we decide on a number, we then maybe all just provide our three. Um, and then, I don't know if we need to do that in real time here, where we would provide them, and then there would be some sort of tally for who actually receives the top five. We probably need to kinda work the, the mechanics of that out, but that's just my initial thoughts on it.
If you were to start shooting for three and you couldn't get satisfaction without going to five. You know, I mean, if you can get to three in a hurry, that'd be great, but if not, go to five.
I'd be willing to put my top three out there.
I'd be willing to put mine three out there. I don't know what the rest of the council would like to do.
Do we wanna write these down real quick?
Yeah, we, we, we can make two notes, and we can, we can, one note is, uh, I'm asking, if, meaningful to the council, at least two, so if you would, just keep that in mind. I'm asking to have two firms in the contract. And then, uh, I do, Raphael did put together a list of the requirements of the bid, so I can tell you who did not meet certain, didn't provide certain aspects of the bid. But again, end of the day, it's up to the council whether you weigh that formality or not.
Well, well, it's...
Certain formality is not all of them.
So, so when you look at your spreadsheet that he's got, I do want you to put on the record the ones that staff deemed non-responsive.
Correct.
I didn't get that, so did you?
No, he's gonna put them on the record.
I'm about to go through it right now, but I will forward it to everyone. So, there were ten requirements of the bid. Uh, one USB, five copies, uh, paper copies, one original paper copy, a letter of interest, GSA standard Form thirty-three's, statement and documentation of qualifications, proof of license and certifications, conflict of interest statement, other work slash litigation experience, and then certified minority business enterprise participation. So, I'm gonna go through it. I'm just gonna tell you the ones who did not meet particular, uh, asked of requirements. Everyone met the USB. Um, Atlas Engineering Consulting did not provide five copies. Everyone did provide one original hard copy. Atlas Engineering Consulting did not provide a letter of interest. Everyone did provide GSA standard Form thirty-three's. Everyone did provide statement and documentation qualifications. Everyone did provide proof of license and certifications. Atlas Engineering and Consulting, as well as Baker Engineers LLC, did not provide conflict of interest statements. Anchor CEI, Atlas Engineering and Consulting, Baker Engineers LLC, and PECs, P-E-C-S, uh, did not meet other work slash litigation experience, which is more so of an, uh, I guess, an additive, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think your columns, L and M, and we're about to talk about that on the next one, aren't really...
Correct.
Mandatory qualifications. They're not minimum qualifications. We'll come back to this. Go ahead and get this one.
And then the last one was a certified minority business enterprise participation. The only firm that participates in that provided evidence to the fact was P-E-C-S.
So, on the last two, the lab, we'll start in reverse order, the very last one is a form that if you qualify, you submit. If you don't qualify, you don't submit. So, you can't disqualify someone for anyone on the certified minority business. So, just because they didn't provide it, it does, that's not, that is, you have to notice us if you are one. That's the difference. So, that's why we do that. Uh, as to the other work, litigation experience, what I would say is, the way that is structured, we do ask that they provide us that for our review. Ultimately, that's gonna be part of the council's overall discussion with them, and it's part of the overall scoring process. So, their decision to provide or not provide it just factors into the overall scoring. So, I don't particularly find that to be a disqualifying. So, with the five copies, I'll say this. If we have it in a digital version, somebody does, somebody doesn't, that's technicality. That's the kinda thing you can choose to waive if you want to. Um, the fact that only one failed to provide it speaks volumes, in my opinion, but I would say that the fact that they did not submit the letter of interest is required, same group of that. And they were also one of the firms that did not submit a conflict of interest statement, which I find to be much more concerning. At a minimum, I think that firm has to be found to be non-responsive and therefore disqualified. And what was the group, what, uh, number two?
That is Atlas Engineering and Consulting.
Yeah, I think you gotta kick them. Uh, the other one that did not provide a conflict of interest, um, I would tell you, I think that is probably much more concerning. Uh, they provided everything else, but if you choose to, I will just say this, if you choose to go forward without them providing you that conflict of... if you choose to, I will just say this, if you choose to go forward without them providing you that conflict of interest statement, and we later find there is one or it's a problem, you probably waived your recourse rights there. So that's a very standard part of all these bid documents. So to me, the, um, that's probably where I would draw the line, is anybody who didn't submit those two probably should be your non-responsives. Uh, I would also say, though, considering Atlas didn't submit two other very basic parts of the package is why they would not. But, um, if the council were so prepared, I think it would be acceptable at this time if the council wanted to designate those two as non-responsive and then provide your names exclusive of Atlas, number two, Atlas Engineering Consulting, and number three, Baker Engineers LLC. If the council finds them to be responsive, we would need a motion to waive formalities.
To me, this is an engineering and, and a bid. For me, every detail is important, and I'm sorry that that might be a minor detail. It's still a detail that's, to me, is very important. So for me, I would like to, if you didn't meet the minimum of what we asked for, I, I don't believe you should have an opportunity at the die.
So strike those two.
It would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I agree. I think the, I think, I think the conflict of interest form is a, is a substantial issue. I know some people would say, I think it is substantial. And if I, the other one had what I would call minor deficiencies, I can't recommend waiving minor deficiencies in favor of that. So if we would, if the council would be willing to rank, um, with those two being deemed non-responsive, that is your recommendation, correct, Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
So just those two. The other ones, the work experience, you're gonna sort out through your interview process.
Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I do want to clarify that, um, Mr. Townsend did mention that he would like to have two on contract, so I'm thinking that maybe we should expand it to five.
Yeah.
With that being said.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, I was just gonna say, I, to avoid a potential conflict on this round, I'm gonna, uh, not participate in this portion and see who goes through, uh, to avoid a conflict with one of the engineering firms, actually potentially two.
So, okay, as far as the reduction, you're gonna step back?
I'm gonna step back because that could be seen as favoritism to, to one way or another.
Okay.
Alright. So we got, what, ten?
They would effectively make it ten.
Okay, so, uh.
You want ten people for us to interview?
No, that's what's remaining.
There are ten firms of which you are going to each list five.
Write down your top five. And just.
Only have four. I'll give you my top four, Mary.
Well, give us your top four.
Do we, do we want, do we want to do that verbally? Do we want to do that in writing? What's?
I think it's much quicker writing, but you know, you can.
It's up to y'all. I can go one by one, and I can write it down, and then we can take next step.
Yeah, Mr. Townsend's prepared to write, and he's gonna scratch Councilman Valley's off, so makes life easy. Okay, uh, let's just start in order where at with Harrison.
Can I clarify something? Kobe and I talked this afternoon, um, even though he's looking for two, you could be open to having more than two as continuing services, correct?
That's, it's, it's totally up to the council. Uh, like, I think I spoke a couple to you, a couple of you about it. Uh, some of our neighbors, I've spoken to them about this and the minimum they have and some of the ways they go about it. One city, for example, they have an architecture firm on contract. They may use it once a year. Right, uh, that just allows us to, to use that resource during the year as needed or as council sees fit. Um, so that's totally up to all of you, but I am, I am requesting a minimum of two.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. I didn't speak up early enough, but I was kind of hoping we could, you know, look at someone on the larger scale and someone on the smaller scale, but, um, you know, which a smaller firm, probably more energetic about some of these smaller projects. But anyway, let's go ahead and get the names. Can you prepare to do your top five?
I am.
Alright, let's, give us a couple.
Uh, Barge. Baskerville. North Florida Professional Services. And Anchor.
That's four or five?
That's four. Do you have a fifth, Councilman?
That's not five?
No, sir. Baskerville Donovan's one.
I said Barge, Baskerville, Anchor, that's three. North Florida. Um, okay, so CDG will be my fifth one.
CDG.
Okay, Mr. Bearbaum?
Yes, sir, I have, uh, Anchor, Baskerville, CDG. I'm gonna butcher this, Midtower.
I see, M-I-T-T-A-U.
And O'Connell.
Okay.
Gotcha, Mayor. Okay, Ms. Skon?
Barge. Baskerville. CDG. North Florida.
Professional Services.
Mm-hmm. And O'Connell.
Good, Mayor. Amy?
I have Anchor, Baskerville, Midtower, and Gordon Moller.
Do you have a fifth, Councilman?
I do not.
Would you like to provide one?
No, I do not. Thank you. It was G-O-R-T-E-N-M-O-L-L-E-R, Gordon Moller, I believe is how you say it.
Shouldn't I can just?
Anchor for sure.
A couple minutes here. Everything's out.
Anchor and Baskerville, that's three each.
Yeah, four.
For an example, you know, like when we were looking at getting something done over, where we wanted the arts center to come in at the building they bought. See, and the bigger, bigger engineers, man, they just, they don't get excited about that at all.
Right.
Charge you out the inning. That's why I wish we had some that was on, that, that one, that couldn't handle ten, twenty million, not dollar project. Somebody might handle a one million dollar project. Not, not that their bill was good. But that's kind of, I've noticed that's pinched us the last couple of years.
Gotcha.
You hear what I said, Tony?
Okay.
Talking about, I've noticed particularly last couple of years where we've had some small projects that uh, a smaller level engineer could handle. They've been quicker, cheaper, all the above. And I don't know if we could break out a third. I was hoping we could do one, take care of all the large projects, one take care of the small, medium projects, you know, but because, uh, my experience with bigger engineers, not really excited about, you know, something that's only gonna bring them seventy-five thousand dollars, you know.
Thank you.
You ready, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Mayor, so, uh, firms that received three or more were Anchor, Baskerville Donovan, and CDG. So we request that those three do be interviewed. Only, uh, I'm, Councilman, what was your la, I'm not even gonna try to pronounce it. What was your, your last one, started with a G? How did you say it?
I said Gordon Moller.
Okay, that firm received one, so that one would essentially be out. Uh, the firms that received two votes were, uh, however you say yours, um, Mator and Associates, uh, O'Connell and Associates, North Florida Professional Services, and then Barge Design Engineering Solutions. So, you have three, Anchor, Baskerville Donovan, and then CDG. If you would like to do five, I would recommend we pick two as of the group that received at least two votes. I can repeat those again if you like.
We want to just go ahead and pick two? Just like we did this?
Yes, sir. So, uh, firms that received two votes were Mator and Associates, O'Connell and Associates, North Florida Professional Services, and Barge Design Solutions.
Is Harrison, you want to pick two of those? Out of those?
I'm butchering this first one, so please, no one put me on the record of this, because I don't have.
Not, you're talking about the one with the M?
Yes.
I got that one.
Yep, okay. O'Connell and Associates.
Yeah.
North Florida Professional Services.
Okay.
And then Barge Design Solutions.
Okay, got it.
Give me a second here to look it over.
We can come back to the honest.
Barge for one.
Yeah.
Kobe, could you ask staff to put O'Connell up on the screen? I don't have it in front of me. I didn't bring my call.
Okay, Jesse, could you, I believe it's number thirteen, so it's the very last one. We go down to O'Connell and Associates. It's gonna be way down there.
And Mayor, you, you mentioned having possibly a third one to handle smaller things, and that was my reason for, uh, mentioning my conversation with Kobe uh, earlier, because one of these companies, and that's, uh, O'Connell. They, from what I saw, they do a lot of environmental types of projects, which we're gonna run into at some, some point, and, and it seems like they, they really specialize, uh, in that kind of thing. Preserve natural resources, responsible development, all, all that kind of stuff. Environmental stewardship, uh, that just caught my attention. If we had a third onboard, you see, for, for me, so, uh, if we're not gonna have a third onboard, I wouldn't necessarily go with O'Connell, because I, I didn't see a whole lot with stormwater, wastewater, water treatment, and that kind of stuff with them. So it kind of matters if we're gonna go with three or not, I guess, uh, for my second pick, but if I had to make a second one, without considering them for those particular things, if you want to come back to me, that's fine. I'm, I'm really debating between these two right here.
Todd, you ready?
Uh, yes, sir. I will go with the Midtower and O'Connell.
Same. Midtower and O'Connell.
Agreed.
You as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Boy, at that, at that point, you got
Three from the tower.
Midtower and O'Connell clearly make it, so that gets you to five to interview. Councilman Harrison don't mean to cut you out there, but but I don't think, but we give them one vote there, one of your votes already, so, um,
Yeah.
That NFPS cannot get there, no matter what you do. Unless you were to vote for Barge a second time, even that wouldn't bring them up above three votes, so.
Would you like to put it on the record?
Yeah, there is a one. You do not have to.
Yeah.
Well, if we're not, if, if we're, if we're not at this point considering three, I would, I would have to say, uh, North Florida and O'Connell.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're not.
No, I'm talking about.
That's something that you all will decide at the interview.
You'll get it decided out later.
Yeah, well, O'Connell's not gonna make it, are they?
Well, no, they're, they're one of them.
They are, okay. Based off of the voting, we would be at Anchor. I'm, I'm gonna say the official name, so everyone's got that.
That's what I was about to bet.
I've learned my lesson.
Say how many they got.
Uh, Anchor CEI received three. Baskerville Donovan Incorporated received three. CDG received three.
That's our first ballot. So those were automatically qualifying. So on second ballot, these all received two, and on second ballot, their totals are.
Uh, Midtower and Associates received three. Uh, O'Connell and Associates received three. Barge received, Barge Design Solutions received one, and then, so if Councilman Harrison chose North Florida Professional Services, they would have received one.
So everybody that would be interviewed, Anchor, Baskerville Donovan, CDG, Midtower, and O'Connell, all have three votes across the collective voting. And that would be a majority of the council, even with Councilman Valley abstaining. So we would need a motion to conduct to select those as the five firms for interview.
So moved.
Second.
And do you, we want to include in that to select two? Not yet. No, 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 we can't do that yet, because it's just disqualified for interviews. Um, if we say to select two, then we would have to rank them.
That's fine.
Yeah, so we're a step before that. Okay, we have a motion of second. Uh, any comments? Many one? All in favor say aye.
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 That was Kerry, and then you will get back with the.
Raphael and I will coordinate with the chosen firms and the council, and we will set that up.
Thank you very much. Alright, that wasn't painful. Okay. He will. And Councilman Valley will file the recusal form. Yeah. Alright, we're gonna go to, uh, four C five.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. This is FDOT, M Scott, two thousand and twenty-five, Lakeview Drive. This is the same grant program that the city applied for, uh, the Twin Lakes Drive paving project. Um, and so the grant request is for eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, the city's match would be two hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. That is for the design CEI, which is the same match we did on the previous grant, not the same dollar amount, because it's a larger project, but the same, uh, things we, we agreed to. So we would be asking for approval of that grant application to submit. The grant, we would not receive probably word on acceptance or not until the end of this calendar year. And then, uh, we wouldn't, if we did get approved, we would not even get the funding until mid two thousand and twenty-six. So Danielle and I have spoken, we would most likely not budget for this project in the fiscal year twenty-six, but fiscal year two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion second. Questions, comments? Many one?
I, I do kind of want to clarify for, uh, maybe any of the public that is wondering about this, because I have the same thing of Kobe. There, this, uh, M Scott Grant Program has specific requirements, and so that's why, excuse me, Lakeview was selected, was because it, it best fits those requirements, and it gives us the best possibility.
Alright, that's correct.
Thank you.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 That was Kerry. Thank you very much. Alright, Kobe, we'll go to four C six.
Mayor, this is ITB, two thousand and twenty-four, PW oh three, Lift Station Pumps and Panels. You all remember, the city, uh, went out to bid for a number of pumps, panels, and, uh, associated equipment. On November sixth, we received bids on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, it was an estimated, from working with Jacobs, it was gonna be around eighty thousand dollars. The bids came back with the lowest being a hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents. Um, we were not prepared for that. We, we didn't expect it to be that high. We did not budget for that specifically. And so, um, I do not think we can move forward with the bids as they were given, and I want to make sure we keep these things clean, either in and out. So I'm gonna ask to, to reject all bids for this ITB, two thousand and twenty-four, PW oh three. And then, uh, Kyle and myself will work together to bring a solution to what it is we're trying to accomplish.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion second. Questions?
I have. Mayor, um, just, just a question about how we ended up this much off in these figures. Because these, these invitations to bid went out in October of two thousand and twenty-four. Expected cost of eighty thousand, provided by Jacobs.
Yes.
Bids came in in November of two thousand and twenty-four. And two bidders were roughly fifty thousand dollars higher, and one was about seventy thousand dollars higher. That's a huge difference in, in our bids. So, um, what I see here is a big delay in replacing equipment that needs to be replaced, because we just, it's just way over what we anticipated to spend, and that's, that's kind of a problem. To, for this much time to, to pass. So I just, and, and not be critical of anyone, but just how do we avoid this kind of thing from, from happening? Because we have had our share of spills. We have had our share of failures in our equipment, uh, to have a delay in purchasing much-needed equipment. Uh, I hope we're prioritizing uh, getting these worst ones replaced or finding the money for it in the process, because we're talking about seven of them. Is that, that's correct, right? So mainly, how, how can we, how can we prevent this? And what were those, what was that eighty thousand dollars based on? Why was it that much lower?
I don't know if Kyle's here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll start speaking, and I think Kyle can assist in that. So the, the number that Kyle provided, uh, and I'll let Kyle elaborate on it, was what he seen the equipment needed to make the current lift station operate as sits.
Right.
Uh, bidders provided bids based off our tech manual, which is for new lift sta- Bidders provided bids based off our tech manual, which is for new lift stations and the new equipment associated. So I know I've had this conversation, we've talked about, I know, I think, Councilman Bearbaum. You know, we talked about, well, do we need to buy equipment for the systems as they currently are today, right? Is that enough? Or do we need to, every time we buy something, does it need to meet tech manual? So we are above and beyond the current need. So that's how we got to the difference in the cost. Kyle was going off of what could be done right now in the need as it exists. Bidders provide their cost based off our tech manual, which is new lift stations have different requirements than our current ones. So I can let Kyle elaborate, but that's how that came about.
Yeah, I mean, he said it just about as well as I, or better than I would. So a lot of these older stations, they're single-phase stations. And that was what I asked Kobe, you know, after the bids came in, that's so high, I was like, holy crap, you know, wow. You know, these aren't real high-flow stations. And that's where I asked Mr. Townsend, I was like, hey, do these provisions for the new construction correlate with what's already there? And I think we're still working out to find details on that. Because a lot of the newer stations, they have surge protection. They have upgraded relays and capacitors and all different kinds of other components in it that aren't really needed for these lower-flow stations. In my mind, it'd be overkill for a little five-horsepower pump to have this massive panel that's there. When we just need something that's simple, that's cost-effective. So that's what we're working on now. Try to figure out, do we absolutely have to have everything as a new station would if it's already existing?
Okay, so, so these bids were just way overkill for what we need?
In my opinion, yes.
I guess. Okay.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, and to the second point about the time delay, doesn't make excuses, we just, it was mine. I took the time, it took this long because of me trying to calculate how we come up with additional fifty thousand. Do we need to spend the additional fifty thousand as necessary? So this is solely on me and the reason it's taken so long.
Yeah. I kind of want to maybe elaborate a little bit on, on the comment. Because at least in the beginning, the explanation kind of was maybe that there was a difference between a single-phase motor and a three-phase motor. Yes. Is that kind of one of the, maybe the driving calls?
Yes, it is, it is a big factor.
Okay. I think as a council, I think we just need to be cognizant, right, of making some of these decisions about, okay, well, you know, we didn't have the extra fifty thousand dollars that we anticipated, so we're, we're gonna, you know, go a different route here. But at the same time, are we selling ourselves short? So I really want us to make sure that we're, we're thinking through, and this is the same conversation I have with Kobe of, yes, it's more than we anticipated, but is there a way for us to get there? Because what I, what I don't want to have, as you rightfully pointed out, I don't want to have continued spills. So are there things that we can do to these lift stations while we're improving them to protect ourselves in the future? But let's also be real. Last night, it's interesting that you mentioned the lightning protection, because that's been mentioned for many, many years here at the DIAAS. Just last night, had a, had a thunderstorm come through, and I'm pretty sure it took out power for the entire, the entire city for a few minutes. So we're, we're highly susceptible to lightning damage. And I've heard, in my tenure here, I've heard of lightning damage hitting pumps before. So maybe it is worth it that we do the surge protection even on the smaller ones. I don't know, you know, I don't have all the information in front of me, so it's hard for me to make a, you know, a hot take on whether that is or isn't financially feasible. But what I'm getting at here is, I don't want us to just say, okay, well, we don't, we didn't have the extra fifty thousand dollars we were anticipating. We're just gonna not do all this other stuff. Timeout, let's, let's look at that. Let's maybe have another follow-up where we actually can have some data here of this was missing from this pump or this lift station. And if it's one phase or, or single-phase or three-phase, to me, that's not a big deal. But surge capacity, proper panel for alerting and skater purposes, that's, that's what I want to hone in on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kobe, help me out. What am I missing? Because when we went out to bid, did we not know what we wanted to, what we expected to get in return? So, for example, that's a huge variance, as we're pointing out. And maybe it wasn't clear on what we expected to purchase. And I'm just wondering, is that part of this issue? And in the future, we need to be more specific on what exactly it is that we're asking someone to bid on?
So I think, I think, I'm not, this is probably our, never happened again. I think everyone was right. Both two parties were right, right? Because Kyle was providing numbers based off what's currently in the lift station. So he was in the mind of replacing it with what's currently there, that's gonna meet the needed lift station. The bidders were pulling it off the tech manual, which have above and beyond what we currently have in the system.
And so our bid.
So I guess what we're saying now is, Kyle was of the opinion, well, can we just replace what's in there? Or does the council want to make sure that every time we replace parts and pieces to the lift stations, that they meet the tech manual specs? That's kind of what Councilman Bearbaum was getting at, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. I, I think that we should take the opportunity, maybe we can't do all of them, but let's take the opportunity to get them all up to a certain standard.
Sure. Do we, is there a provision that has just reamping lift stations? Is there a tech manual for that, or is it just for new construction?
We would have, we'd have to take a look at the tech manual and get to that.
I, I would think, my understanding of, and again, I'm not an electrical engineer, but my understanding is the difference between single-phase and three-phase is gonna be, you know, cost savings on the electricity bill long-term.
Correct.
I would assume ideally, we would love everything to be three-phase.
Yes.
But I also understand that you get below a certain size on a pump, and it's not economical to buy a three-phase half-horsepower pump. They probably don't even make them, but.
It's hard to find.
Right, right. So we could, in theory, we could be forcing ourselves to buy a half-horsepower, three-phase pump. Then all of a sudden, they're impossible to locate a repair or replacement for.
You can drop it within the system and have both within, but you can't, you can't necessarily, you can't kind of fake it. You can't really bump up to three-phase, but you can bump down, so you can be servicing both of the three phases. You just have to step it down, was the problem.
I just think we should, we should take the opportunity as much as possible to get all of these up to a single standard. That way, parts are theoretically interchangeable, panels are consistent. Because that's the other thing I've heard over the years, is we have all of this various configuration of panels.
You definitely do.
And it makes maintenance as well as repair difficult, because we have just a wide variety of panels throughout the system.
So, so that's all I was trying to understand, is how, why that variation there? And if they're going by the tech manual, I completely agree. I mean, if we're gonna upgrade a system, let's upgrade it. We just have to figure out how to pay for it and do it the way it should be done, and then we can sleep at night.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and get these bids rejected, and then I think that we probably ought to give him a heads-up on, in the future. Go from the perspective of protection versus.
Sure.
The basic replacement. I know, I worked with electricity a lot, and I'll tell you what, when it comes to lightning, there is no guarantees. We've, we've had properties where we've put so much protection on there, you'd think it's impossible for them to lose power. And then we've been in other places that had no protection. And down at the beach where you get all kind of lightning, and they never get blown. So I mean, it's like, it's, it's difficult, but I would certainly go with the surge protection.
Well, yeah, absolutely. If y'all are gonna re-look at this, maybe suggest converting some of our single-phase stations into three-phase stations. If we're gonna, if y'all are gonna take the lead for surge protection and added value, it would benefit the city greatly to, if they're gonna go in and put the panel in anyway, to go ahead and make it three-phase instead of single-phase.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk, was I, was I the one to make the original motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would like to offer an amendment to my motion to include that staff bring back in the next, it's ninety days, good.
Depends on what you're asking for.
I'll say ninety days, and we'll see where this goes. Ninety, ninety days, an analysis on these lift stations to just basically do a comparison. This is what is in the tech manual, this is what we have at the station, here's where they don't match. So that we can then make up, make up a plan for that.
That includes a recommendation, though, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Not just an assessment.
Analysis and recommendation, yes.
Okay, now let me make sure of it, get off with base, base motion, which was to decline, right?
Decline, but then for staff to bring back.
Okay.
Staff to bring back in ninety days.
I'm in my second.
All right. All right, so we have our motion second. Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I was Kerry, thank you very much. And we will go to four C seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Opportunity Florida Membership Board Representative. I'm gonna introduce this, I'm gonna ask Uriah Matthews with Economic Development Alliance, please come up. So Opportunity Florida is a regional economic development organization, more so for rural communities. And so the EDA has paid for the city's first-year membership to the organization. I believe they did the same for Paxton, if I'm not mistaken. And so I did get reached out, the executive director reached out to me, Roy Baker. And asked if the city appointed a representative to that board. So if Uriah would please kind of explain Opportunity Florida to us, and what the organization would be for the city.
Thank you. Uriah Matthews for the record, U R I A H Matthews with two Ts. Hello, everybody. The Opportunity Florida is one of three rural areas of opportunity in Florida. There's a south-central, a north-central, and then northwest Florida. We're the westernmost county in that grouping for Opportunity Florida. And being designated as a REO provides benefits. Most recently, a big piece of legislation was passed that allows communities in rural areas of opportunity to forego reimbursement for funding some, some types of projects and grants. So if, if you're requesting money, you don't have to have the expense and then, and then seek reimbursement. You can actually request the funds or direct payment to the project. So that's just one example of how the legislature treats rural areas of opportunity. This would be a quarterly board meeting, every quarter. Most recently, we met last week at the Calhoun Airport for Opportunity Florida. And then there is a fall conference, Mayor, I believe you've been there a few times, the Florida Rural Economic Development Alliance meeting. Typically, that's in central Florida. This last meeting was in Ocala in the November timeframe. It's a great organization. You'll find a lot of like-minded communities there, and I'm excited to have you all be a member.
We're just looking for the council to appoint someone to that board. That can be one of the six elected or myself, but that is up to the council, because they'd like to have representatives.
Do any council members want, want to serve?
I'm interested in doing that.
Well, I would like to nominate, I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Harrison to the, to the rural opportunity membership.
Second. I have a motion second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Well, aye.
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 I was Kerry. And just to comment on that, I'll say this, and this local group that works out of Chiepley and Mariana are, they don't have this big old gulf sitting in their backyard like we. I'm telling you, those guys really hustle, so you'll learn a lot working with these guys. And, and I, and I'm sure that Uriah is picking up some.
It's a great group to be a part of.
They're very, very aggressive, and they can, they can squeeze a big bottle of lemonade out of a little bit of lemon, I tell you.
Yes, and, and if you haven't heard or seen some of the news, there's some legislation going through right now sponsored at the state level, and they're calling it the rural renaissance. So I think this is the perfect time to be part of this organization and to be aware of some of the legislation that's being passed. I think it'll work out well for the city of Defenia Springs. Thank you all. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
All right, Mr. Kobe, we got one more for you?
Yes, Mayor, it'd be number eight.
Number eight, you'll go ahead.
Okay, Florida League of Cities Unanticipated Revenue. I'm gonna give a quick background on this. This all happened well prior to my time, so I'm gonna let Mr. Atkinson then take over from there. So the, the city received on Thursday a check in the mail for two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents from the Florida League of Cities. I suppose there was a claim made back in two thousand and fifteen because sales tax and government sharing funds have been withheld during the time the grand jury investigation was going on. And so I got on Ms. McDaniel, she brought us some information. We looked at the grand jury report, and you, there were two things withheld, the revenue sharing, half-cent sales tax from the fiscal year thirteen fourteen and fiscal year fourteen fifteen. Under the revenue sharing portion, it says released to the city on two ten sixteen, released to the city on five nineteen seventeen. If you take the half-cent sales taxes withheld from both of those years and you add them together, you will get the number which is listed somewhere in there. But it is two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents. If you take that and subtract our five thousand dollar deductible with the Florida League of Cities, you get the exact number of the check we received, two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents. This Lisa Gorlinsky, who is our planning assistant, also does insurance for the city, has been persistent with the league on this for years now. Because the league initially said it wouldn't cover the claim, so she's been looking for a denial in writing. Never would provide that, kept going after them. About three weeks ago, they came back and said, well, you may have a claim. And then all of a sudden, a check showed up. So we do want to thank Ms. Gorlinsky for her persistent work in this on behalf of the city and pursuing that as well. So, Mr. Atkinson, if you have any further.
Think you summarized it very well. The city has long held the position that based on the state of Florida's correspondence to us in several instances documented in the memo about that the situation was as much due to the city's failure to respond from our finance directors at the time to correspondence that this should be treated as an errors and omissions type of claim. Just to give a broad analysis, under our policy, given finance director is a city official under the code, and that as such, we should have been identified and protected for that, and that's what our insurance is there for. And the state of Florida is very clear, this was not a penalty. It was just, we're withholding the funds. And once we made everything right, and the state would not submit it, our position is that became a forfeiture of those monies. The league took the position, that was never the case initially. But again, here we are, this many years later, and we never got the money from the state. I am very happy to see the league honor what is, in our opinion, and has been in our opinion since two thousand and seventeen, a very plain part of our insurance policy that should have been covered. It would be no different than if the person had literally embezzled the money, failed to make deposits, or given out access that causes us to lose the money. It is misappropri, it is not a misappropriation of money, but it is a misperformance of official duties in this case. We think it was at least misfeasance.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we vote on this, Clay, I don't recall, I just learned of this this afternoon, so I'm very excited that Ms. Lisa has pursued this all this many years. However, I believe I've read in the past where we've gotten this money reimbursed once already from the state. And I think before we, before we vote on it, I think I would be more comfortable, could we postpone voting on this for one, one more meeting? So that we can verify that we didn't collect this already? Because it was either through a letter or as an audit, in one of the audit readings that I've read after this. Because that was one of my whole points when I was running for this seat, was that grand jury report. So I have a lot of documentation, and for some reason, when you, the first thing I said when Kobe told me about this today was, I think we already received that once before, if I'm not mistaken. And I just want to be, I just want to be absolutely sure before we deposit this money that, that we didn't already receive it once.
I'll say, I'll say this, the mayor, and I certainly know, we met with state representatives about trying to have, because we were told very clearly we would never get the money back.
Right.
That we would look at, could we possibly, with the Senator Gainer specifically, who I'm reverting to here, had talked about possibly finding a way to get the city some additional revenue for other purposes to make up the loss of it, but not to replace it. And he certainly did help us with that. I would say this.
He tried to help us with that.
An abundance of caution, I would just.
I believe the insurance required to pay the money is they were required to pay, because it was a claim that we were out that amount of money. No matter what, if the state did ultimately send us that, they certainly didn't send us interest. So I don't, I don't see where there's any reason to hold a check and then let the League of Cities change their mind. It's taken them this long to issue the check. We're entitled to it.
I was about to say, it's been deposited.
Well, if it's been deposited, you're under the resolution following the grand jury report to make a decision of what to do with the money at this meeting. So there is no hold based on the resolution following the grand jury.
So, so in the event that I'm correct, what is the remedy? We have to send it back to?
The state didn't, it's not a double payment. The state did not send us this money. If you're right, the state remitted it, then that's our insurance paying us.
Now, there might have been a misprint that you read, but nobody sent us any money.
Yeah, I will be shocked if somebody can show where the state of Florida ever remitted us that check again. But in any event, it's not a double payment, because it doesn't come from the state of Florida. And we never received a check from the League of Cities. Mr. Bearbaum.
But, but we filed a claim that says we never got reimbursed when.
No, we, no, we did not. We filed, we filed a claim that an official of the city cost us money due to their misfeasance. To be very blunt, if not nonfeasance, and the League of Cities ultimately honored that. We never said, the league doesn't make us hold for the state failing to pay us. We said we were, had these monies withheld, and that is harm and damage that did occur to the city. And I would certainly say the lack of $200,000 for eight years now that the city would have had available to it is certainly something that we probably were well entitled to that full amount, probably plus, probably plus substantial interest. Florida judgment rate interest would be much higher today, and it was back then as well. We had a low window in between, but there's a window of time there that would have been pretty supportive.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we set this money aside until budget time in a specially designated fund so that it is not spent. And that during the budget time, we contemplate how best to actually use this money for the betterment of the city.
Second.
I have a motion second. Questions?
Um.
Go ahead.
I, I think we need to do that, but the only concern I had is if we had any matching funds that we were short on or anything. But again, that can be negotiated during the budget cycle.
Yeah, I'd really like to see us heavily contemplate this as a council, the best way to use this money. This was unanticipated revenue, and I really think that it should be used in a way that, you know, every citizen can point to and say, this is what that money was spent on. I don't want to see a repeat of what brought on the grand jury investigation, which was the $300,000 from the B P oil spill going into the general fund and just disappearing into the ether.
Right. Any other kind of question?
Is there anything pressing that we need to spend the money on now?
Not that I'm.
Not that I'm in a rush to spend money, but.
Do you have a recommendation?
Not for an immediate purpose.
I, I hear the chief's already putting dibs on it.
I haven't even told him about this. I was hoping he wouldn't pretend.
Oh, he's listening.
Oh, my God. So, so what we would do is, so what we would do is this. Pursuant to our 2018 resolution, and for the record, 2018-14, the monies are not able to be expended until a joint report from the city manager and finance director are received detailing the nature of that, where it was deposited, what date, and a recommended proposal as to the use of it. So as a simple matter, there's the motion to put it into a separate fund is unnecessary because the monies are effectively frozen. They have a window of time to do this. They're to consult with me, they certainly consult with the mayor as part of this. And the reports shall be prepared and presented to the city council regularly scheduled city council meeting as a clearly stated agenda item within 30 days from the receipt of revenue. So they've provided advisement under the resolution today. Well, day did it come in, Danielle, do you remember it?
Thursday.
Thursday. So you've got 30 days from its receipt on Thursday for them to bring it back to you. So at your next regularly scheduled council meeting, they will provide you that report to indicate what they're doing. So obviously, that doesn't change anything else we're required during the advised other obligations. But until that report is prepared and presented and action taken, there is no base, there is no ability to expend the money unless an emergency circumstance is declared by this council, not the city manager, for the expenditures of those monies. So right now, you've got a 30 day hold on all monies until it comes back with their official recommendation of where to go.
One withdraw your motion till that comes up?
Well, there's just, it's premature at this time to do anything because it is frozen at this point.
But he does have a motion up there.
Right.
Uh, but Clay, is it, is it still premature for us to just go ahead and agree to not do anything with this until budget time? We can still allow the report to be submitted?
Well, you can't do any, so the way the resolution is verbatim, until the report described here and has been prepared and presented as required by this resolution, no money is associated with any revenue referenced here and shall be expended in whole or in part. And then there's the exception for emergency circumstances. So that's a full statement in and of itself. So until that happens, they have to present it and you have to act on their recommendation. So at that point in time, once that's been done, the council will make that decision. So once they make that report, if they have a request to use for it, you can say, do it. You can say, we want it made part of next year's budget. But take the action on their report. We're ahead of the report is what we're, we are right now today.
Got you. Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Second.
Thank you. Kobe, any other comments on that?
No, maybe that is all.
Go ahead.
No, nothing good?
Yeah.
All right then, we're going to go to our public hearing. And we will go to Mr. Wallace on 5A1. Mr. Wallace, you want me to take this while you're walking up here? Because we've handled this one a few times.
Yes, sir, please.
So this is the downtown.
Copy the ordinance, so.
So this is the downtown business district that we have talked about. Councilman Beerbomb and Councilman Valley have probably gone through this one more times than they ever care to. I don't know if Mr. Krishan's here, but certainly if he is, he was instrumental in that. But this is the creation of the downtown business district that has been heard no less than a half dozen times at the Code Land Use Review Committee, heard once here initially. You have first readings or we're on second reading. So what we need is a motion on second reading, conduct the public hearing into adoption.
Same move.
Second.
I have a motion second. Questions? Go ahead. All right. And no public comment either? Seeing none? If, we just need to go ahead and have a vote at that point, and I'll do this reading, Mayor. All in favor, say aye.
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 As Kerry. Ordinance number 982, an ordinance to City of Phoenix Springs, amending City of Phoenix Springs missed code specifically the Land Development Code hooded and recodifying and renumbering the sections therein to create a new downtown business district including regulations therein providing for conflict severability and effective date. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Wallace? Well, before he starts, Mayor, I'll keep on going for the moment. We, the next four items, even though they are first readings, are small scale amendments with companion rezonings. Because the rezonings are inextricably intertwined to the small scale amendments. These cases, these are quasi judicial proceedings. Anyone wishing to speak, including staff, the applicant, or members of the public, whether it's to ask questions, offer comments, or otherwise, will be presenting sworn testimony and needs to be sworn at this time. So anyone wishing to speak on items 5A, 2, 3, 4, and 5, that is the Darrell Hook Small Scale Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment, and there in Wayne Stock, Small Scale Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment, needs to be sworn at this time. Please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. If anyone that might make a comment. Anybody at all, if you wish to speak, got to be sworn. Please bear to me, I do hereby swear or affirm.
I do hereby swear or affirm.
The testimony I present.
Testimony I present.
Will be the truth.
Be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Staff and the audience are sworn. Mr. Wallace?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is 2025, as I say, that's ZO3. It's Darrell Hook's request to amend the future land use map for property located on North First Street. He is requesting a small scale amendment to amend the future land use map from municipal, which is currently the county zoning designation, and low density residential to medium density residential. Again, it's located in the North First Street, and it is 12.6 acres in size.
Motion approved. Second.
All right, motion, it'd be motion on first reading and advertise your second reading, public hearing, and for adoption.
Same move.
Okay. I'll have a motion second, yes, ma'am.
Chris, will you please remind me, what is the difference between R1 and R2 as far as size? How many units per acre on a R1 versus R2?
Yeah, the R1 allows a density of three and a half dwelling units per acre.
Three and a half?
Yes, ma'am. The R2 allows 16 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
Um, and we discussed this earlier. There is currently no sewer that serves this site. So if any development were to take place in the future, the developer would be basically on the hook to extend the city sewer to this site in order to accommodate any sort of high density development.
And how far, did, did we determine how far?
It's approximately, I would say, a quarter mile.
Mr. Valley?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wallace, the residential that's in the county north of there, what is the density of that area? Do you have any idea?
Uh, well, it's currently designated as municipal, for whatever reason.
Well, it's listed on, in yellow as residential on the map that I'm looking at from Exhibit A, which is outside city limits, but it's also got a key that calls it residential Walton County.
Yeah, that is a, I am not, to be honest, I'm not familiar with what the density is of a residential. Mr. Atkinson, do you know off the top of your head what Walton County allows in that?
They've got several.
Yeah, it depends on which one it falls under.
Are you talking about that yellow area? Is he talking about the yellow area or the orange?
The yellow area that is outside of city limits.
And what's your little maps that, can you scroll, whoever's doing the map, can they scroll down a little bit? Thank you, right there. Is it the third one? It's that bright yellow, right, under the blue?
Uh, yes, it'd be the one under the institutional.
Yeah, I mean, without, no, without looking at their actual maps, I'm reluctant to offer that right now, one way or the other, because they have multiple residential categories. I can hazard a guess which ones it's not, but that doesn't help us.
I'm just concerned about, there's a lot of low density residential around that area. It's got some proximity to arterial connectors and First Street is, you know, going to be a more important street. It is an important street now. I just have a concern about the nature of the lands to the north, which are outside the city limits, but also the adjacent properties. I can see that they're not going to get a lot of opposition because there's just not much around it, to be honest, in terms of current development. There is some commercial activity south of them, and then the apartments. So, you know, I understand, but I do have some concerns about putting higher densities out beyond the edges of lower densities when we should be going the opposite way and bringing that higher density towards the core rather than to the perimeter.
Sure.
With that said, the availability of sewer is going to restrict them from being able to do that now. The amounts, council might consider the benefit that if it is a apartment complex and they need a density that might pay for sewer to serve other residents that don't currently have it. So that's not something to ignore either. But I'm just saying, I do have some concerns in terms of pushing higher density beyond lower density towards the edge of the city when we should be having higher density towards the core and not towards the edges.
Can, can we have, if we can scroll down to the zoning map, Exhibit A of the existing zoning, I think we probably need to talk about this at the same time for completeness, even though we're having separate motions here, if we take a look there. So that's one of the issues that was discussed at planning that I want the council at least take a look at. And to Councilman Valley's point, this parcel, Mr. Wallace is the one that has the cross hatching on it. You see it up there to the right, obviously. And that includes, the parcel's already has two different designations.
Within that one square?
Correct. Yeah, so, so we have an inconsistency the way it is broken, as it is now. So we do have to reconcile that.
Yeah. And that is a result of the annexation. This property was annexed in three or four months ago, I believe. And as part of our ordinance, whenever property is annexed into the city, it automatically is assigned the highest density residential zoning within our ordinance. That's why the northern half of the property is R2, while the southern half remains R1.
One, but the southern half is already in the city, is what we're pointing at.
Correct.
And so because when he brought that in, he was effectively upzoned under the way our code works, although the land use amendment, which we're talking about now, cannot be done at the time of annexation by statute. It has to be heard through this process. So it's a little bit of an internal inconsistency that gets created in those scenarios. But it is also, Mr. Wallace, the highest residential category consistent with the county designations, correct? Under the zoning, I believe is the way we phrase it.
Uh, I, I don't believe that's the way it reads. I believe it says the highest density residential zoning district within our ordinance.
Okay.
I've, I had the same question and concern. Is it the highest density in, in terms of what was there, what was at the county level, which is what Mr. Atkinson is saying, which, which I have interpreted our code as well. I really thought we were assigning the highest density consistent with what the county had and then translating it into R.
That's the historical application. What I would say is that goes to your point, though, of what is the county's residential designation.
Correct.
It is certainly not their lowest density designation, or it would not be compatible.
Because my, the reason I'm harping on that is if the density that's on the north section of the parcel is consistent with what the county has, and that's what is going beyond, all we'd really be doing is correcting it to what really is an inconsistency in terms of filling in between the two middle densities, which is the R2. If it's lower density beyond, then we're really just creating an island and expanding density beyond the natural edges of where it is now into what's surrounded by agricultural.
Mr. Wallace, what was the building department's suggestion, or the building, the planning board's recommendations on this?
They recommended approval.
Did they get through these same questions that we're proposing at this time?
There were not a whole lot of questions asked at that meeting.
Because I could see where it could fit, or it could not fit realistically. All right.
Go ahead. Mr. Wallace, how, how far does south, does the R2 go? There, south of Van Avenue, that whole block right there? Do you know how far that is, R2?
I believe it goes all the way south to 90.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I see that there's a lot of R2 around there already. So while, while this, again, we seem to be like dealing with technicalities here, right? Where we've got these two pieces of property that are technically zone different. But just maybe from a larger perspective, for me, there's already a lot of density around there. Uh, so it, it's not, for me, it's not incompatible from that perspective. You've already got it literally right up the road.
Even without sewer? Is it, are you saying that's a medium density and it's already built up and there's no sewer there?
Well, no, I'm saying that there's R2 already very close to it. And so from, from that perspective, we're not, we're not overly impacting that neighborhood because there's already a lot of R2 right around that neighborhood. Secondly, I do think it's a positive that if we approve this and something gets built, that there's the possibility of extending water sewer to that development and servicing additional, additional residents. To me, that, that's the benefit that kind of pushes it over the edge for me.
Yeah, and this was a very common problem with our sewer system, especially on, currently right now on Bob Sykes Road and 19th Street, there's a lot of interest in developing a lot of that vacant property. The, the one hindrance is that there's no sewer. And I met with a gentleman in the afternoon regarding a, a large parcel that they would like to develop, but they're trying to figure out, how do we get sewer to the site? So it's not uncommon to have sites that aren't currently served by sewer, they have water. But that's an upfront cost that, that the developer will have to take on. And then we will receive the benefit of extended sewer and also they're going to be on the hook for the capacity fees as well.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Chris, hypothetically here, if, if the, the developer or the owner were to maximize the density here, do, does the current road infrastructure support that, that maximum density? In other words, if, if they were to then come to us, if we were to approve this tonight and then they were to come to us and say, great, I want to, I want to max out my density and I want to do a development on this property, would we be, would we then be able to approve based on the road infrastructure and surrounding it?
They would be required to provide a traffic analysis.
Okay.
Showing daily trips. We would have to look at the, what kind of condition that road is in, which may require additional upgrades to the road itself.
Okay. So, okay.
And that, that one's going to be interesting in that it's not just our properties are going to be served, our residents are going to be served by First Street. The, that service is going to extend into the county. And our, our road is going to be the destination for that. So all that traffic is going to flow out to 90 from the county. So we will, we're going to have more traffic there long term. It's going to require upgrades in that area, is what I'm saying.
But, but that's my point, is that there, there is a check and balance coming in, in the form of a traffic study and a traffic analysis that. that we, we will have to contemplate, the planning board will have to contemplate before, before we approve, you know, a theoretical development.
But what, but Clay, what, what teeth do we really have there at the end of the day? If they don't ask for a density increase at the time that they've asked for DO, as long as they run their water and sewer, they're going to be automatically given the density that we approved today.
Correct.
Uh, we can't say no because the road's insufficient. We might use their, the revenue that we generate from those property sales to, to have, you know, $800.
Well, we don't have a traffic, to be clear, we don't have a traffic concurrency system in place in the city right now. So I'm not going to say you can just deny solely for that reason, but it is a factor we do have to consider.
But it's messy.
Okay, but he just said that it would be, there would be a traffic analysis done at a later point during the DO process, but now you're saying not.
What's that give us? What's that give us? So which one's right? Our best control, well, and we're saying the same thing, but the best control that we, but yes, there's analysis. What's the T? Once they have the density, horse is out of the barn. Our, our best leverage is before the density is, is on the property. Is when we do the changes in density that, that the biggest impacts happen. We're limited in terms of our, our denials once that's done. It gets very tricky is what I'm saying.
I think one of the, if I could chime in here, Mr. Mayor. One of the things where we do have a little bit of, uh, teeth in this is that every project that we see developed within the city, you have to have proper water, proper sewer and a proper roadway system to access that property. And I believe this council has the right to look at those three factors among others and either request additional improvements, um, accept it as presented. Um, but it, it is never my intent to bring something to the council that I feel is insufficient. That is not, um, going to be a, a burden on the city or that would be a burden on the city. So we work those things out during the civil engineering process with the developer to ensure that when this comes before the council, all of those things have been addressed and will be rectified if needed prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the project itself.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Clay, is this a legislative determination?
No, it is quasi judicial in nature.
So if we don't approve this, there is the potential for a Burt Harris claim?
So the bottom line is you, your, your decision is based on competent substantial evidence. The board is required, is it sitting in this capacity to pass this matter or deny this matter based on the evidence presented before. At this point, the only evidence we've heard thus far on this project is from Mr. Wallace, which says it is consistent with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. As such, until you hear competent substantial evidence to the contrary, the board's position is to approve. Anything less than that would be in derogation of the law and anything could subject the board to, or the council to litigation, um, including Harris Act claims or otherwise. But the primary claim is, do you have evidence to deny? You have to have evidence in the record to deny at this point. I'm not saying we're not going to hear that. We may hear that in the next 10 minutes, hear in the next 10 seconds after Mr. Wallace's sound. Right now, the only evidence in the record is his testimony and staff report and Blaine Commission's recommendation, which all says it meets the Land Development Code Comprehensive Plan is due to be approved.
So again, any other comments from the public? That, uh, sworn in?
And this is first reading, so we will have second reading.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Uh, it's Carrie. Thank you very much.
Okay, this is in ordinance, uh, number to be determined. It's an ordinance adopting a small-scale land use map amendment of the City of the Phoenix Springs Comprehensive Plan, changing the land use classifications, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with providing for severability and conflicts, providing for codification and providing for an effective date.
Now, we will need the same motion on the result.
Correct.
Seven moves.
Second.
I have the motion second. We're speaking the same property. This should be an easy one. Any, any questions? Resigning to the public.
All in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Uh, it's Carrie. Thank you very much.
And unfortunately, Mr. Atkinson, I do not have a copy of the ordinance. Would you mind?
I think I can make this happen.
I apologize.
I think I can figure this one out for you. So this is an ordinance, ordinance adopting a zoning map amendment to the CDPX Springs Conference of Plan, changing the zoning map classifications, repealing all the in conflict here with providing for severability conflicts, providing for codification and providing for an effective date dealing with the North First Street parcel. Ordinance to be noted.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And of course I found it as soon as you were reading.
I hope I was close.
I was trying to get a little bit of help there, so.
584?
Yes, sir. This is 2025 dash SSA dash zero four. It is Aaron Winestock's request to amend the future land use map. The property is currently designated as low-density residential and he is a requesting a land use change to commercial. This is for a, a parcel of land that is approximately 0.32 acres in size located on North Highway 331 directly across from the new Choco facility. The planning board did review this request at their February meeting and they voted unanimously to deny it.
Mr. Atkinson, is appropriate, can we make a motion to disapprove this?
Well, let Mr. Wallace get his staff report in the record.
I was just asking the question.
The motion would be to either approval in first reading or the motion would be to deny if it denies it ends. But we need Mr. Wallace to be able to present his whole time. We have to have the applicant. And we do have other sworn people. So it would be inappropriate to make the motion at this moment in time till you have the evidence in front of you. So please let Mr. Wallace.
Yeah, and at this time, staff has recommended denial of this request. It is not consistent with our comprehensive plan. It's not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And I believe that it, although Mr. Winestock may have a low intensity use um, in mind for now, does not mean that it cannot be sold in a month. And then you get anything that is allowed within that commercial district uh, that would be surrounded by residential property on three sides.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I inquire? Counsel, please.
Oh, I was just wondering, what's underneath that legend where it's white? You see the gray underneath it? Cause that's industrial also. What?
We can pull the map, but I think that's Southland Utility.
That's Choco.
It is.
Choco.
Choco's property.
And the grayed out portion that's Choco.
Choco.
So is the piece that we're talking about, the red?
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah. Mr. Wallace, in your professional opinion, as the city's planner and therefore its expert on this matter, does this constitute spot zoning?
I would, in my opinion, I would say that it does. Yes.
Would this be categorizing a parcel of property different than its surrounding neighbors and the traditional and historical use of the neighborhood?
I believe so. While you still have Choco across the street, it is separated by a, a rather busy highway. I'm looking more at the properties to the north, east and south that are residential in nature rather than jumping across the highway. At a use that is more.
Are you familiar with the city's land development code? It's future land use maps and zoning maps?
I am.
Are you familiar with those?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with this area of the city?
Yes, sir.
And as part of that, um, is it your opinion in testimony to the council that the property lying east of US Highway 331 North differs in character from the property lying to the west in this area?
I would, that is a correct statement. Yes.
And is that part of your analysis and consideration?
It is and it was in the report. Yes.
And your recommendation to planning board was denial? And is that your recommendation on both the future land use map and zoning map amendments tonight?
That's correct.
All right, Mayor, then I think we turn it over to the applicant. He has an opportunity to present. Unless, unless anybody has any other questions for Mr. Wallace. Allow the applicant, if he's here.
Mr. Wallace, we do require a buffer between differing uses, don't we?
There would be, yes. I believe when it's a, uh, if the zoning were C2, that would have but, and R1, there is required a minimum 20-foot landscape buffer with a fence.
And the Choco property, which currently is tree-lined along the 331 area, is also required to have a buffer when they develop in the future on the front there if they do.
They were, they would have been required to provide a buffer on their northwest and southern borders.
Okay, we'll allow them to address council.
Yes, come on and please, uh, state your name if you would.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Bush. Um, my address is 125 East in Tendencia, Pensacola, Florida. I am an attorney at Clark Partington and an ASCP certified planner. I was engaged after the planning board meeting by the applicant to just come and address council. We would differ in your planning director's analysis and, uh, would submit to you that this is consistent with your comprehensive plan and land development code. While spot zoning is a term you hear in planning, it is not prohibited by law. Um, if the zoning change could still be considered transitional, you know, the size of this property is quite small. It's 0.32 acres. It, um, you know, the size itself is going to constrain any major development going in there that's going to impact the neighbors, uh, directly across the street is this industrial use. Um, having a spot of commercial between the residential and industrial could very well be determined by you to be transitional in nature, therefore, um, an allowed zoning pattern. I believe Mr. Winestock is present, um, and so he could take questions as well, tell you what he intends to do with the property. We do understand we can't contract zone. You, we can't tell you, we just plan to put a fireworks stand there. Um, but that is the intent. It's not intended to be any, you know, heavy commercial use. It would just be a seasonal retail type establishment. You know, always here to promote growth and development, economic development in the county. Anytime you can take a piece of property and use it for, for something, you know, to a higher use. Um, I think that's good for your citizens, good for your tax rolls. Uh, so we would ask that, uh, you adopt the findings presented by Mr. Winestock at the planning board and determine that this is consistent. You know, rather than straight out denying it, if you wanted to send it back to the planning board for additional consideration, we would ask that rather than a denial. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. End stop.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Aaron Winestock. I'm the applicant. And, um, again, I just wanted to reiterate some of the, the facts that I put into how I'm going to develop property. Uh, it will be, uh, our current fireworks stand. Uh, we've come before the council, uh, where the, we set up right there in front of Triangle. Uh, we're looking to just move to a more permanent basis uh, to eliminate rent, paying Triangle and, and other utilities, uh, there. Uh, plus to, just to deepen our roots within the community. Uh, we've been here since, uh, 2021. Um, we're currently based in Niceville, so we're just looking to move everything up here. It's not going to be a, a heavy traffic uh, development. Uh, it's not going to be a huge square footage. Uh, the building we have proposed is only going to be, uh, 760 square foot. And only open four weeks a year. At the state of Florida states that we can only be open four weeks a year. And I can tell you, industry-wide, it'll be, the major traffic will only be two days a year. Uh, 4th of July and New Year's Eve. Uh, that's 98% of our sales. Based on current traffic counts, we have a triangle and anticipated growth, uh, for the company. I only anticipate a daily increase, uh, for traffic in and out of the parcel of about, about 12 to 14 cars a day. And it's not all at once. You know, they come dispersed throughout the days. Uh, it's not noisy. Um, there's no, you know, major, uh, trucks coming in and out all the time. Uh, we're not going to be setting off fireworks anywhere near on the property. Uh, we're not going to be playing loud music. And I know it was brought up to me, some people had concerns over fire hazards. Uh, specifically, you know, it, uh, possibly blowing up or causing damage to other houses in the area. And, um, I just wanted to put on the record that one, there's two types of fireworks, 1.3 commercial grade and 1.4, uh, consumer grade. 1.3 is what the, uh, what the cities use for their huge fireworks displays. And, um, 1.4 is what the firework, you know, consumer fireworks stands sell, uh, to everyday people. Uh, 1.3 is the only one that has the possibility of, of blowing up. It's heavily, heavily regulated on the state, local and federal level, including the ATF. I would say if it was completely 800 square feet of 1.3, uh, commercial fireworks, it would probably, it would take out, uh, Choco and Southland and, and half the city block. Uh, but we're talking 1.4 consumer grade. And if it sets on fire, uh, it'll present no more, uh, of an issue if the house next door to another house was completely engulfed in flames. Uh, some of the fireworks will go off. Most were actually just burn off because of the intensity of the heat. So there's no safety issues with the, with the planned use. That's all I had.
Any questions from? Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jackie Russell. Excuse me. Our house is adjacent to the property in question. Uh, we're within 35 feet of the border. And our concern, number one, and first and foremost, it's a very busy corner. Uh, we're of a close proximity to Choco and Southland businesses. There's a close proximity to two churches, two schools in congestion of traffic with Choco and their businesses on the other side of the street. Sometimes it's difficult for us to get out of our driveway because of the traffic that's there. Um, if this is a business that's going to rely on having seasonal activities, uh, 4th of July, I visit family, it could be a problem for us to get in and out of our driveway. Um, there's a frequency of accidents on that corner. There has been two bad ones in the last seven months. And there's a lot of fast-moving traffic, so that's a real consideration for us. Also, on a, a lower note, there's trash being tossed out of cars and whatnot as they're going by. So my concern would also be trash generated from the business coming out of there. Noise is another consideration, even though it's just a small selling venue that would only be selling a few times a year. There's a lot of noise there to begin with, and this is just going to generate more. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get her name right? You there?
Jackie Russell.
Ma'am, will you state your name for the record?
Jackie Russell.
Jackie Russell. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Tomma Rushing. Um, I also own property right about four lots north of the property, um, in question. And just to point out, the property directly to the east behind this property is also vacant. So if you make this commercial, that would also make it easier for. So if you make this commercial, that would also make it easier for that adjacent property to come up and make it commercial and tell them what would come up in our residential area. A couple of things that I, the reason why I'm asking for y'all to deny the application. He stated that the business is going to bring additional tax revenue and jobs to the city. If you're only open four weeks a year, is it really worth considering that? This is going to cause additional traffic backups. As the previous lady said, this is a very, very busy highway. There is accidents all the time at Oakwood Lakes Boulevard. I'm sure the chief could back that up. We don't want the extra traffic. You already have a high amount of traffic on three thirty-one coming off of Walton Road, Chaco, and Oakwood Lakes, and it's right in between that. Me personally, I'm worried about how this is going to affect my homeowner insurance. I am having a hard time even getting insurance. I'm paying four thousand dollars a year now. What's going to happen putting this right down the road from me? We talked about the lightning earlier. Okay, well, if you have a building full of fireworks, lightning strikes. I understand he's saying that it's the same as your neighbor being on fire, but that's kind of hard for me to believe, especially with Chaco and Southland across the street. What else is there that's going to make a bigger fire and a bigger issue? Also, I wanted to point out that Mr. Winestock has posted on Facebook previously advertising for his business stating that it's not, I don't have that part. I'm sorry. Don't drive to Alabama for the good fireworks. Come to Florida Firecracker Company LLC for all your Joe Dirt-approved fireworks. So this isn't just your typical Walmart fireworks that aren't going to hit the ground. These are the ones that are actually going to expand and cause bigger issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Bush, did you have questions you wanted to ask of any of the audience members or of Mr. Wallace? Is there anything, we go to the applicant for their rebuttal, anything they heard during public comment that goes back to Mr. Wallace?
Just in closing, I would point out that throughout your fine city, there are instances of spot zoning. You know, we could provide addresses, I believe they're previously provided. So just the fact that it's spot-zoned is not a reason to deny. And although there has been a statement that it was not consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, there's not been any further detail on that. And the consistency with the comprehensive plan and land development code can be found in a logical and orderly development pattern. And so we would just ask that you support growth, support Mr. Winestock's attempt to bring some, you know, commerce into the area and approve the rezoning and small-scale amendment.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallace?
Mr. Wallace, any last comments?
First, if you would respond to a comment about land development code and comprehensive plan, then I do have two questions.
Yeah, I mean, I have reviewed our conference of plan. There is language in there that, that asked about is the proposed development consistent? I have confirmed that I do not believe that it is. I do not believe this is consistent with our zoning. I understand there may be other areas of the city that appear to be spot-zoned. We can't change those, but we can affect what happens moving forward. And the more you keep doing these types of rezonings, the more justification that gives for the next applicant who comes in and says, well, you've done it here. Why can't you do it here? I want to be consistent. We can't go back. I would think that there was probably nobody on this council when those properties were zoned that way. But moving forward, this council has a say in the way that this city develops and the way that it affects our community. And I think that this request is inconsistent. I've been honest with Mr. Winestock from the beginning that I did not believe it was consistent with our zoning. And as anybody has a right to, he proceeded to move forward. We followed all the necessary steps with the planning board. And now we're here tonight to discuss it in an open forum again. And I agree with all the testimony I provided this evening.
We'll go to the council for any questions, that is to a few conclusions.
I have a question, but I do have a statement that, you know, we've been pursuing improvements and adding a turn lane in that area for some time. We've had fantastic response from the community every time that's come up due to the hazards that we see in that area. And increasing, you know, potential hazards is problematic. I also have concerns, I suspect Mr. Wallace does as well, in terms of jumping two zoning categories from an R one, bypassing R two straight to C one and changing the character of that area. I am a professional in those areas as well, and I agree with Mr. Wallace's interpretation that it isn't consistent and would create spot zoning, which are something that we actually fight to prevent.
Mr. Wallace, do you believe this is the singling out of a small parcel of land for a use classification that differs from its surrounding area?
Yes, sir, I do.
And is that for the benefit of Mr. Winestock?
It would be solely for the benefit of Mr. Winestock, whether he chose to develop it or at some point put it on the market for somebody else to develop.
Is there any basis founded in the public's health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the city to apply this zoning category and land use change?
I think it would have a negative impact.
So the answer is no, it would not be to the benefit of the city?
Correct.
And do you believe this result in disharmony to the surrounding area?
I do believe that, yes.
So with it being inconsistent with the surrounding area and benefiting the particular property owner solely, would you say this creates a small island of a different use within a larger area of uniform use and development?
I do agree with that, yes. Certainly, certainly to the property to the northeast and south. I understand Chaco is across the highway.
And was it your prior testimony when you were up earlier that everything to the west is a different development pattern than going back to the east?
Correct, yeah.
And basically, I'd only trust the council that while I don't have any reason to doubt what Mr. Winestock has represented to you of his intended use on the property. You've heard my admonishment on this many, many times before. But when we're dealing with a land use amendment and zoning map change, we are not able to say what the person saying they're going to do is right or wrong. We can't, they can sell it to somebody and they're going to be able to take advantage of all those options regardless of what they do. There is no contract zoning allowed. There is no land use restriction agreement being done. You have to make a decision based on what the actual land use map designation, zoning map designation being proposed are. So it is to the council to approve, approve with any conditions, to deny, or as Ms. Bush invited, if you want to go back to planning board for more consideration, that is well within your purview as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm making motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion second.
Is that based on the testimony presented?
It is.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, it's denied.
Ms. Bush, do y'all find accepting that denial is to both, or do you want them to formally vote on the second one? Okay, so we'll put on the record that will be a denial as to both. This is only map tracks along with the small scale.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a break?
In two hours.
It's been that long, I was having such a good time. All right, we will. We're going to take a short recess. Did you need to say anything to wrap that up?
No, it's good.
You're good?
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a, about a five, six-minute recess.
It's nice to meet you.
You can see him. You've got motorcycles living on there.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. They got, they put something there, I never even thought about.
What's this?
Mayor, I want to go home. Let's go.
I'm ready.
Bang on that.
How about you, Raphael?
Let's get ready. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Uh, we're, we are at citizen comments. So we're going to have a floor for citizen comments. You certainly come, you get three minutes, and please state your name and organization.
Here, take this opportunity. Tim Parsons with Liberty Partners of Tallahassee, just to, just to recognize the significance of the Triumph Gulf Coast Award that the city received a couple of weeks ago. Y'all know it was a long process to get something that, that, that board would approve. I think a lot of it was the support from the governor for the job growth grant fund that the city received last year, more or less piggybacked on that project. So we were just really excited to see the final funding for that to come in. We think it's going to be a tremendous economic development boost to the area. Obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of jobs tied to those grants that we look forward to seeing come to fruition in the next several years. So just really excited, like I said, to see Triumph approve that project. You know, we've been up here how many times talking about, you know, lack of projects being awarded in Walton County? Luckily, we've seen a handful awarded this last year to put Walton County closer to where they need to be with regards to that funding. So again, we're really proud of, of all the work that went into that, that project and those applications, so.
Tell your team we greatly appreciate all the work they've all done.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment?
J.B. Hiller, resident of Hume Act. I just want to thank y'all for the actions took tonight on the senior center. It surprised me, but a pleasant surprise, because you have now a three-year contract. And that's going to provide a level of stability we haven't had. We don't have to go through this rigmarole every year. So we do appreciate that. We had a good group today, another potluck lunch. And of course, several people asked me what was going on. The city manager sent out an email last week to the members, and which is very much appreciated, to tell everybody what was going on and what to expect. And he talked about the meeting tonight and the county tomorrow, and then And he talked about the meeting tonight and the county tomorrow and then Wednesday. He will be informing the members, uh, the, the next in the process. So thank you again, and we look forward to working with you.
Kobe, when you expect things to be back in normal around there?
So the agreement is to take place on March fifteenth. Um, we have advertised the two positions that serve the center under the city. Um, so we are collecting those applications. If it is, we approved it, if the county wants to approve it tomorrow, we would move forward with those, uh, in relatively fast manner. Um, and then we'll work with Tri-County to get the funds moved, uh, and county in terms of the communication, the email, everything they have, we work, but we'll give all that back to them. We have no need for that. We have our own. They're good with that. And so, um, hopefully by the end of that week or the first of next week, we should be completely transitioned over to be the goal.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Public comment? Come on, Gary, you can get up and go on there. All right, we're gonna close the floor for public comment. And we will move on to Ms., uh, Clay, you got anything?
No, sir.
Uh, to Ms. Hevlin on the, uh, CRA appointment?
Yes, um, we have an opening on the CRA board and I brought an appointment, uh, Mr. Rob Hamilton, who's here in the audience. Thank you, Rob. Uh, he's a local family man, a local business owner, an advocate of our city and its development, and many of us might know his wife, Gabby, who represents, uh, the chamber. So that is my recommended appointment, and I'm hoping you could all, uh, support that.
Can you make that a motion?
I make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion. And a second, any questions?
Um, yeah, what happened to the, uh, Lenny Hatcher was on the, what happened to her?
She sent a resignation letter, uh, last Friday. And I think it had to do with, um, uh, what happened with the CRA and us wanting to take it back. And, uh, she, she said, I think she put one sentence in there of, no communication from me, but, you know, I'm kind of a little bit iffy. So if it comes before us, which what do I do? What do I not discuss? So, uh, I think it was just some miscommunication. And I wanna thank Ms. Lenny for all of her. Uh, I think she's stayed on there for eight months. So, but she chose not, not to stay on there. And I think there was a little bit of.
It was a surprise because she was doing a good job, and it takes a while to get your feet under you and learn what's going on. Uh, so I really hate to lose, you know, good people. It took a while to find someone to fill, uh, the spot I was trying to fill. I know how difficult that can be. Uh, I remember when, uh, uh, Ms. Hatcher was put on there. Um, it was put on the same day as the meeting was, uh, which happened again today. Uh, fortunately, I know Mr. uh, Hamilton, so Rob, Rob's a great choice, and I completely support him. Um, I really regret that the public doesn't have a chance to, you know, comment on that because it's still not on the agenda in terms of their name because it was only sent out as an email. Um, again, I fully support Rob taking this position. I actually considered him for that spot as well. I thought he'd be a great fit. Um, you know, but I really think it's important for the public to have the opportunity to comment on agenda items. Um, I didn't oppose putting it on the agenda. Um, but I do wanna go on the record on that. We are a professional board, and things should be put on the agenda properly.
All right, any other comments? From anyone? All in favor, say aye.
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 As Carrie.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard, Rob. All right, we're gonna go to Councilman Valley on nine V one.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, uh, I've been holding on to an item for a long time, uh, you know, since we lost Mr. Ennis, uh, from this council. Um, you know, there's, there's been a hole in terms of, you know, massive amount of experience that was brought to this city and this council, uh, in the time that he served, which is a substantial amount of time. Um, and I've been holding on to it because I've been really hoping they would be able to finish the terminal and get out to the airport and actually, you know, do something that I've been wanting to do, uh, you know, since his passing. And what I'm, uh, seeking is to recognize, you know, a lifetime of service from Mr. Ennis, Mr. Henry D., as many of y'all would refer to him. Uh, Henry D. Ennis, uh, by commemorating his service to this county, this city, and this nation, uh, in naming either the terminal or, uh, the field, uh, the airport itself after Mr. Ennis. I like the idea of the airport. Um, there is the possibility that, you know, we could have naming conventions issues uh, in the future that could threaten the longevity of that. Uh, and so the terminal is something we have more control over, and so that's why I actually have two items on there. But at the end of the day, what I really, what stuck with me from day one and what really, uh, felt right was, you know, pilots calling in and what you acknowledge over the radio and in addition to the call letters for the airport was, you know, Ennis Field. Uh, you know, welcome to Ennis Field, uh, welcome to Dufuniac Springs. And when it comes to a lifetime of service, uh, I think that a recognition that, uh, that is appropriate is one that matches the importance of that service. And so what I'd like to say is, I'll just kinda go over some of that experience and some of that service that Mr. Ennis has provided. So from nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-four, he served the United States Air Force during the Korean conflict. Later, he came back and was brought back to service, uh, in the Alabama National Guard from sixty-one to sixty-two as a tank commander. In law enforcement, he there, he served for thirty-two years at the Walton County Sheriff's Office, where he was the chief bailiff, uh, bailiff and the court security officer assigned to the courthouse. He also established a sheriff's reserve and attained the rank of captain in those thirty-two years. For the city proper, he served seventeen years, and he passed away while in office, uh, as this, as a member of this council, where he also served as the mayor pro tem during different periods. He served on the planning board for just shy of twenty years, as they placed it in the, uh, notice. It was nineteen years and ten months. And, uh, served as Dufuniac Springs Housing Authority past chairman, Walton County Fair Association past director, West Florida Regional Planning Council, where he served at the time of his passing. He served on our TPO board and actually was a vice chair at one point. Walton County Council of Aging Board Member. He was appointed by the Governor of Florida, the Pi Council, the three county area. Council of Thirty-Six, which is our original Economic Development, uh, Council. He was a founding member of that. He also served as Dufuniac Springs Downtown Merchants Association, where he helped organize association and served as a chairman. Locally, he was member of Kiwanis for over fifty years, uh, past president, past secretary, active member of Giddy International, and then actually had a business of his own during all that time. So when you look at a, a resume like that and you look at the numbers, the years of service, that is truly a lifetime of service, a lifetime of dedication to his family, his wife, uh, and we do have some family here. Now, before I, I did bring this forward, you know, I, I, I've had some concerns. I had some concerns about stepping on the toes of some of the folks that were actually founding members of that airport. We do have families that, you know, were actually out there from the day one when it was dirt field, and they're just borrowing equipment from the county and the city to move around dirt and to, you know, get the dump out of the way and, and, uh, and get some planes landing. Um, so I did reach out to, uh, a very close, uh, family friend, uh, Mr. Tim Kirby, uh, who is here, uh, to make sure that we weren't stepping on any toes in terms of some of those founding families. And Mr. Kirby was very much in support, even though, you know, his dad is equally, uh, worthy of that recognition. Um, you know, he thought that, you know, he, he really liked the idea of flying in the Ennis Field. Um, and if he has anything to say, I, I will defer. We also have some family members here in that, uh, you know, Ms. Nadine's, you know, she doesn't get around quite as much as she used to, and Sonny, you know, just had some, some surgery and, and Linda's got her hands full as well. So, uh, you know, they couldn't all make it, but we do have some folks here. If, if they feel like they wanna say something, I'm, I'm fine with that. But the family does express their support. Um, I know Sonny and Linda, you know, were, were very honored by that, and Ms. Nadine is exactly as you would expect. It's like, you know, no, whatever, you know, just, y'all, y'all do whatever you wanna do. I, um, I'm fine. Whatever the kids want. But, uh, I would have done this before, but I was really trying to do this closer to when the airport was gonna open because I really wanted to make that part of that opening ceremony. Since the fire chief has been out there and done initial inspections, and we know that they're close to that CO, and I really expected uh, any day now, and I really didn't wanna delay any further. So, uh, with all that said, you know, respectfully, um, you know, I would request, and I would make the motion. Uh, and we can discuss, you know, details as we go, uh, in recognition of a, a lifetime of service, rest of the council name, uh, Dufuniac Springs Airport, Henry D. Ennis Field.
I'd second that.
Questions? Comments?
Just pointing clarification, are we gonna, are we gonna call it Ennis Field or are we gonna call it Henry D. Ennis Field? Ennis Field kinda rolls off the tongue a little better.
And I think, I think the really, uh, I think it's gonna get abbreviated. I think Tim could probably help with this because he actually, uh, isn't a professional in the aviation field, and he could provide a little bit of guidance on that. Um, Tim, do you, do you have a comment on that at all? Can you give us a little bit of help? Please. And, and for the clerk's sake, please just say it.
Personally, I think when you come into the airport, of course, it's five four J. I've, I've got my license there forty years ago. Um, yeah, can you hear me now? Um, from my standpoint as a pilot, it'd be, the Ennis Field has a great ring to it. Um, we all refer to it as five four J. in the pilot world, but Ennis Field has a nice ring. Henry D., hmm, he's Henry D., but Ennis Field has a nice one. So that's my suggestion. And to caveat what he said, my dad started the airport and actually in the wintertime, uh, excuse me, the, uh, January nineteen fifty-eight. He was one of the very first folks that actually was a chairman aboard the junior J.C.'s out there that actually reconstituted the, the runway out there. They took a bunch of bulldozers, and as a matter of fact, I provided you some information on that. So him, John Frank Bloodworth, Paul, um, um, Tealyn, the whole group of our founding fathers here at this city actually started that airport back then. Um, in nineteen fifty-eight, they started that, the reconstitution, and then that following, within a month or so, July the thirteenth, they had their first airshow here. And that's how they generated funds for this airport. Uh, they had a thing called, my dad said, penny for pound rides. And so what you did, if you weighed ninety-five pounds, you put ninety-five cents. And that, you got a free ride around the airport. So that's how the kids and the, and the, the young people actually started to fly. They, they flew for the love of aviation, not for the money or not for the, you know, the dusting or the beaches or anything like that. So, you know, and then after that, matter of fact, the following year was a, where they had over four thousand people at the first ever, the second annual airshow at the, at the Dufuniac Springs Airport. Matter of fact, I've got video from the very first airshow, um, back in nineteen fifty-eight I found, and I can provide that to y'all also. But I think going through the process of seeing how the airports developed over the years and learning how to fly there, you know, um, matter of fact, he approached me of that, and I said, um, you know, yes, it'd be nice to have my dad's name there, but also Henry D. Ennis was my next door neighbor for fifty-eight years. He's my second dad. So to me, it's an honor to have either one of my two dads being represented at that airfield. So that's my take on the airport. Well, one thing I would like to recommend also is, I know that you have mentioned this, is I work in a squadron at Eglin Air Force Base, and we have what they call a heritage room. If, where most of the lieutenants come in there, they walk in there, you know, the first thing they do is they get the popcorn, jalapeno popcorn, and they sit there and walk around, look at everything. Most pilots, when they land here, and their legs are tired, they land, they wanna get some free popcorn, get a Gatorade bottle, and just stretch their legs. But I think it'd be really nice, somewhere in the FBO, the new FBO, if you was to start a heritage room. So you can actually capture the, the founding father of the airport and the people that dedicated that. You know, like the T thirty-three that's sitting out there. My dad is actually, there's some, there's some, actually, there's some pictures of my dad provided, matter of fact, that's in the current FBO over there, of when they dedicated that in nineteen sixty-one. They acquired it from Eglin Air Force Base. And Civil Air Patrol. And then, so you had the Civil Air Patrol dedicating that. Um, I think John Frank Bloodworth was in the picture, matter of fact, one of our founding fathers there. So it would, a heritage room would actually get people an opportunity, even having a wall sitting up there with some few storyboards, and I don't mind helping out any which way I can because I do have a lot of history of that. But so the people, when they walk in there, they can say, hey, you know, oh, wow, I didn't know it go by that far. Oh, wow, here's some pictures of some airplanes back then. Stuff along that line. Pilot eats that up, and to me, it would just be a better way to show our community of, you know, the history. But as far as Ennis Field, I fully second that.
So, so I'll modify my motion to adjust that to Ennis Field, as stated.
Can I just say thank you for the history lesson, but I didn't catch your name. Who was your dad?
My dad's name was Tom Kirby.
Kirby.
He's, uh, he's, matter of fact, I provided some articles to him. Um, I went and did some research in the Dufuniac Springs paper. Sat up there page by page, it's not even the microfiche, and actually looked at, and back then, they actually had, every week in the Dufuniac Springs Expo, back in, starting in nineteen fifty-eight, they had a thing called the hangar, hangar talk. And so they'll give the current updates of, you know, what's happening and everything else. So it was kind of neat watching that, actually going to the courthouse on my spare time, going through there page by page for, for years. So I have all those good things that even, you know, more than I should donate or actually help do something like that. So that's part of our history, and we can't ever deny that.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
And, um, I just wanna make sure that we do it clean. Uh, you had the second?
I made my second, Ennis Field.
Um, what I wanted to say is, uh, the other part of that was that we do have other ways to commemorate people at the airfield. Some of that is conference rooms. If we've got that video, I'd love that to be rolling on that TV in there twenty-four seven, identifying what it is and the people involved. And any other videos from other airshows that we've had over the years, I think it's a wonderful, uh, tribute to the people that built this community, a wonderful tribute uh, to the people that built that airport and the wonderful, uh, contributions of every citizen, uh, should be recognized, especially when they're, you know, put out there in such a, a big way. Um, again, um, we've got ways to do that. I had spoken to Kobe a couple of months back about making sure that we capture that memorabilia and make sure that it doesn't get damaged and that we transfer it over by trying to define a room where that's gonna be. I'd really love that be in place or at least identified where it's gonna go when we open. But again, that's, that really needs to be a airport director, you know, city manager, and council conversation. Um, because at the end of the day, you can start to monetize some of the naming on some things, but again, I'd, I'd rather see a start with commemorating the people that actually put it together, you know, for free in a lot of cases. Uh, and then we can talk about, you know, the other things that, that could be monetized in terms of naming conference rooms, you know, for corporate sponsors and, and, and hangars and stuff like that. But I think we start with the people that had their feet on the ground, did it for passion and love of the city, uh, and a passion and love of aviation.
All right, we have a motion second. Any other questions or comments?
My name is Heather Marshall, and I was Henry Ennis's granddaughter. I am Henry Ennis's granddaughter, and he would be very honored. Um, to say the least, my grandfather was a servant of this community. He loved it. He loved Dufuniac Springs, and he loved being on the city council. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
As Carrie, Ennis Field. All right, let's go to number two.
Um, thank you, Your Honor. And, uh, I'll say, if, if y'all can stick around later, we'll, we'll take a picture. Um, that'd be great. Uh, next item, uh, so on East Live Oak, uh, when people come off of three thirty-one, you're kind of in a rush. That first bend, uh, kinda slows you down a little bit, but once you hit the other stretch, it flattens out before you get to the stop sign, uh, near the church, and it does go fast. I had residents approach me. Uh, several of them had gotten together to conspire against me to, to have a conversation. And so they wanted a speed bump. Um, I said, no, we don't do speed bumps. Um, they're bad for the city trucks, they're bad for garbage trucks, they're bad for our cars, they're bad for the marshal, and they're, and the chief, the fire chief absolutely hates them. Uh, so we hate that, but we can have a conversation and at least bring to the council the idea of a four-way stop sign, uh, which would be at, uh, Twelfth Street. That street has a short leg that goes to the north, uh, before it turns along the railroad tracks. Uh, we don't get a lot of movement through there. Uh, we do have some activity for folks coming up to Live Oak to get out the three thirty-one or to go downtown. Uh, but the request is for a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Twelfth and Live Oak, uh, and I make that a motion.
Second? I have a motion second.
We do have at least one resident here of, you know, a lot of the folks are older or work, um, but if you wanna hear a comment from anyone, we do have one resident here.
I know personally, I would rather not see that happen. But, uh, and of course, I know that, um, this may, we may get requests all over the city for four-way stops.
I've got one more.
And there's a reason for that. Uh, now, Live Oak.
Well, there's a reason for everything.
Is it a good one?
There's a reason why people like me don't wanna stop one more time.
I will say that folks are using Live Oak as a bypass to three thirty-one. The traffic is designed to be on three thirty-one, and three, and Live Oak is supposed to be a, a community street. It is an important community street, and so I expect it to have more traffic. But it, I think it has more trips than, uh, than the, uh, east end of ninety, uh, or at least it's comparable. I mean, it, it gets, it gets way more cars than anyone thinks. It, it's at least fifteen hundred daily trips, at least. Um, and, uh, you know, weekends, it gets a lot of activity. We've got children in the house on the corner there. We've got, uh, children next to that. We've got grandchildren in the house next to that. We've got children across the. We've got grandchildren in the house next to that. We've got children across the street from that. It's a lot of kids. Um, and we're, and we're getting younger families moving into our community all the time. Uh, so again, this one is a busy street, but when it straightens out on that leg, uh, everyone's in a hurry because everyone wants to go through there. And if it actually discourages some traffic through there, I think that's a good thing.
Any comments? Question? All in favor, say aye?
Mayor, I do.
I didn't see.
Um, uh, uh, it, it is a major route away from the center of town, and from anything going on in the lanyard, library traffic or whatever. This stop sign, this four-way intersection would be one block from Eleventh and Live Oak, which is a short stop, and, um, there's, there's virtually no traffic on the north leg of this, of this street, of Twelfth Street, because it goes and curves right at the, the, uh, railroad track and goes to the water tower, back out to Eleventh Street. So, we're looking, um, I don't know, it's ju, it's just, at, at different times, I like to see traffic flow from the center of, of town where all the activity is and, and, and move on. Um, if, if speeding's a problem, we, you know, there's ways to address speeding, uh, without necessarily stop. I would hate to see that four-way stop after the event, um, downtown. Um, so it's just, I'm, I'm kind of like the mayor, I guess. When you get our age, you're just, you, you want, you're in a hurry to get where you want to go. Not speeding, but you, you know, stopping and just all these stops, um, is, is, is really stagnates traffic. Um, and I just think we could, uh, maybe look at other ways to possibly slow traffic down. I'm not in favor of speed bumps. Um, but, um, they're, they're just, they're just hard on vehicles and, and, and everything else, but, um, anyway, I would just hate to see it slow the flow of traffic away from the center of town. It, it is a route. I mean, if, if you're leaving downtown, for example, and you want to get to three thirty-one, well, you have no choice but to go out on ninety and fight all that, right, to turn left on three thirty-one south, or you go Live Oak, right, from downtown, you go to Circle or whatever, and turn, or turn on Eleventh and go Live Oak. So it is a route to three thirty-one that kind of needs to flow, in my opinion, but, anyway.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye?
Uh, nay.
Aye.
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 Nay.
I was Carrie. Turn my brakes out, okay.
Please don't burn your brakes out on Live Oak, you're going too fast.
Yeah. Well, I go down there a lot, so I'll be stopping a lot.
At least twice.
Anyway, okay. Uh, we are on number three. Tony?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so, uh, this one, uh, one of our, well, uh, our state senator has, uh, put forward a bill, uh, looking to repeal the legislation that, uh, changed the, how the, uh, counties could or could not, uh, impose restrictions or establishment of customary use along the beaches. Um, you know, a lot of our residents work on the south end, whether it be construction, house cleaning, uh, in, uh, in, in, uh, rental properties, own rental properties, uh, and so, uh, or when retail businesses associated with tourism. Uh, tourism has had to struggle with the changes in customary use in terms of the restriction on beach, beach access due to, uh, the expansion of private areas along the beach. This bill would not fix all that. Uh, and so, um, you know, I don't want anyone to think that the bill that the, uh, senate and the legislature are passing would fix all the problems that we have. But it would limit any future, uh, expansion into, you know, claimants or, or participants that haven't established a, a, a private claim on the beach. So, you know, again, this is another case of the horse being out of the barn. Uh, and it is really a, a more of a show of support for the idea than it is an actual change in, in any real meaningful way. Um, however, you know, we, we do have great support from, uh, Senator Trumble, uh, and I'm asking and make a motion, uh, requesting the council to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for passage of S B sixteen twenty-two and H B sixty forty-three during the twenty-five legislative session, and direct the city lobbyists to speak in support of both bills when they are heard in the legislative committees.
Second?
All right, motion second. Go ahead.
I'm a strong advocate for public beaches, and I fully support the county, um, efforts to acquire additional beach properties for the enjoyment of our residents and our tourists. But as we all know, out of an abundance of caution, I recommend we wait to review the language that emerges, because this has to first go through three committees at the House and three committees in the senate, and it's important to recognize that the final language of that bill is likely going to differ significantly from the original form as it sits today. So, by taking a measured approach, we can ensure that any legislative action that aligns with our community's best interest and preserves the accessibility and enjoyment of our cherished public, public beaches. So I think it's too premature.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
So the county commissioners will be hearing this tomorrow, and they are proposing to support Senator Trumble's bill as it is written. I don't have to pull it up, actually. Uh, I don't have to read it off of anything, because the bill is very simple. Re, repeal the bill that was done before that created such a disaster on our beaches and restricted our access to our own beaches. So, um, it seems pretty short and, uh, simple, so I actually would, would, you know, remain in favor of supporting the current bill. And if it changes substantially, it would probably go away entirely, um, rather than being modified. And we have our lobbyist, uh, or at least Tim, uh, here, uh, can speak to that. And again, it's not a resolution, it is not a, a, a drastic, um, you know, measure. All it is, is a letter of support, uh, and to allow them to speak in favor of repealing the bill that caused all these issues.
I'm.
Just so everybody's aware, the original author of that bill back in the day that caused the county to spend already eight million dollars in lawsuits is, sits on two of those committees that are going to evaluate how this goes and how the language changes. So, um, again, I would caution us to be careful, because it is, the language is going to change significantly. So even though it might say repeal now, it's going to significantly change.
Okay. Um, okay, well.
I'm not here to debate you, I'm just sharing my opinion.
I'd be glad to sign. All right, any other comments, questions? Yes, sir. Come on.
My name's John Dillard. I'm a slow southern voice, so three minutes may be too much. I thought you were going to say too little. The, the bill itself is extremely short. It says a bill to be entitled, "An Act Relating to Recreational Customer Use of Beaches Relating to," it gives a code section, "Relating to the Establishment of Recreational Customer Use of Beaches Providing an Effective Date." And what it does is to say, "Section one six three point oh three eight Florida statute is repealed." It's short. You don't get much shorter than that, other than Jesus wept.
Yeah.
We moved here from Atlanta, my wife and I did, hoping to enjoy a, a quieter time, and what we found on the beaches after a while was, it wasn't quiet. Quite honestly, it affects my wife and I very little, but when I see something wrong in a community, it hurts my heart. Whether it's homelessness, hunger, greed, uh, it just really hurts my heart. Uh, I'm in this solely to try to restore what has always been Florida's goal, being a tourism leader. It's, it's dampening tourism, it's dampening businesses. Uh, I have two clients in the one to five million dollar range, and both of their sales are down. I'm a CPA by trade. Uh, sales are down, rentals are down, there, there's odds in the community. We are letting the one percent of our community, and I'm not talking about Dufunia or Walton County separately. I'm talking about America. Thirteen states, predominantly vacation here, providing over sixty-seven percent of the tourists that come to Walton County. So I'm talking about thirteen states are being duly punished because of a few people on the beach. Got one of the senators, Pasadena Mo, to sponsor a bill that singled out one county, and it assassinated one county. This will not fix it. This is a start. It's a big emotional encouragement. Uh, I plan to approach the Florida Chamber of Commerce. I plan to approach Freeport. Uh, I've been in contact with all the Florida senators and governors is, uh, well, that's governors, senators and legislatures, as well as Governor Ron DeSantis, and I've also written his lovely wife. I've invited them here to walk on our beach and to see that our beaches are not free. We live in a free country. We need to stay free and be free. I yield my ten seconds.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. We do have a motion on the floor, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Nay.
I was Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you going to the Florida Power and Light?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. So, uh, here we are again, Florida Power and Light. We've had this conversation before. It was polls, it was all hurrying. It was polls, it was rate increases, it's bills. Uh, I'll do the abridged version. Uh, I am going to make a motion requesting the council authorize the mayor to sign a letter of, uh, to the Public Service Commission, the Florida Public Service Commission, in opposition to proposed rate increases by F and L, do the impacts on our residents and businesses.
So.
Well, you ready to motion, so you need a second?
Uh, so, um, what, what's being proposed is an eleven point nine, uh, guarantee profit on equity stakes. That's a hard pill to swallow. Uh, they were at ten percent, a hundred and forty percent, a hundred and forty basis point increases. Y'all got a football game? Hundred and forty point base, uh, increase, and, uh, really, here we are paying for, for everybody else's problems all over again. So, again, uh, our, our citizens pay enough. Uh, we're trying to solve our water rate issues, we're trying to solve our sewer issues, we're trying to solve a lot of, uh, needs that we have in terms of sidewalks and everything else. This is just another bill that people are having to pay, and, and I, uh, I think it's a, a bridge too far this time.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Right?
Say.
And I got plenty of ink for another session here. So, uh, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 I was Carrie. Thank you very much. All right. All right, now we're going to, uh, Southern Rail.
Sorry, sorry. I got one more.
Yeah.
All right, so, y'all get excited about Amtrak? You like Amtrak? You like the idea of a two and a half to three and a half million dollars of business revenue every time they put in a stop in a small town of our size? I get excited about that. I think the business downtown should be excited about that.
Amen.
And I think a lot of, uh, people that have to travel and have, uh, limited access to, to vehicles, and you can't drive anymore, you age out, you like the idea. Well, the fir, we've already agreed that we were pursuing that, and the mayor's already done a letter support for Amtrak and actually for a very similar issue. But because Pensacola's on board, because Mobile, uh, to New Orleans is finally.
Which they weren't.
Well, they're not, but it's.
I mean, no, what I'm saying is Pensacola was not.
They were not, but yeah, they finally are. Uh, but D.C. Reeves, Mayor D.C. Reeves has, uh, been a very strong advocate of this and has been very, uh, generous and kind with the city of Dufunia Springs and including us. Uh, but the first step that we were missing was, they were willing to do the ten thousand dollars to join, but what was missing was, you know, getting the legislator to, to push it forward, and then the governor signing it. So, I am making a motion requesting the council to authorize the mayor to sign a resolution in support for passage of S B nine sixty-six and H B eight thirty-three during the twenty twenty-five legislative session, and direct city lobbyists to speak in support of both bills when they are heard in the legislative committees.
Second?
Thank you.
I do want to comment real quick.
Go ahead.
It was, uh, Councilman McKnight.
Yeah.
That actually took the initiative and actually showed up to a Southern Rail Commission meeting and was unfortunately turned away at the door, because Florida was not a member of the Southern Rail Commission. So, there, there's been advocacy, uh, going back a long time, and, and again, I, I still chuckle and hats off to Councilman McKnight for, for showing the initiative and showing up at their doorstep. Unfortunately, he was turned away because he wasn't a, a golden member, but, uh, hopefully we can rectify that through, through support of this.
And I will briefly add, I'll be brief, I promise. The, uh, the importance of the Southern Rail Commission is that they actually provide, uh, real tangible support to the applicants. They help with the applications. They help with, uh, identifying design standards, uh, needs, uh, they help to get on the list. Uh, and that's very important, especially, uh, being a small municipality, we can, we're going to need all the help we can get in terms of our portion of it, so that we can make a solid argument for it to be at our old depot.
Now, they used to weren't, weren't quite so mean. Lord, I don't know how many years ago that was. I went over to New Orleans and met with them, and they were welcoming open arms to me, and there was only one other mayor, Mayor Marks of Tallahassee, and, uh, we, we, we were received gladly with the Southern Rail. Of course, Amtrak was there, and at that time, it's still C S X who owned the rail, and, uh, F, was it F R A, the Federal Rail Association or Commission? And so, anyway, and so we, it was rolling well, and I will say one, one good thing about Senator Nelson. I can't say anything else, but about his effort to get the Amtrak in here was relentless. And we, we were doing pretty well for a year or two. You know, as you well know, they came through here and did a, an inspection run, and, uh, and I couldn't get them to stop in Dufunia, but I got them to stop to about a two or three mile an hour run, and went through here very, very slowly while everybody hoot and holler, and they were very impressed with Dufunia, because they must, this was in the middle of the morning, a workday, you know, and then, that was at least three hundred people in the downtown area and scattered all along. So it was a, it was a big deal, and, uh, but anyway, the momentum just kind of fell, and Pensacola was not helping us at all. And I thank God Tony sort of picked up on this again, and I thank God for what Bob did, McKnight. But, uh, man, I, I would, I would love to see this. This is, town was birthed by the railroad. Mm-hmm. And I'd love to see us to, uh, see that, you know, connection again, other than, but we don't even have, what, three, two, three, two trains a day come through here? Used to, it was every two hours. Every two hours, that train.
It's picking up.
It's picking up, you know?
Yeah, we're getting more.
But anyway, um, any other comments? We did vote, or no?
Nope. Motion second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 I was Carrie, thank you very much. Now we'll go to Mr. Bearbaum with the budget workshop.
I, I will be brief. Um, so if you recall, originally, my, my motion several years ago was to, um, have the council start thinking about projects in March, so that it would give, uh, the employees time to go out and actually gather data and actual true cost estimates, so that when we got to the budget cycle and we got to the budget meetings, we would have actual hard numbers. So that was the intent of the original motion. Unfortunately, I've been called away to close down a data center in California, uh, and so I will not be available at the end of the month for the meeting at the end of the month, and so I would like to move the meeting where we would discuss, have this discussion about the budget and budget items to either the first or second, um, meeting in April. So that is my motion.
Second?
Okay, a motion second. Kobe, he'll be included in that. You represent the whole force, and you're going to bring him in?
No, it'll be, it'll be like we did last year. It'll just, it'll be me, we'll talk to it, and, uh, appropriate staff will be here if we need any questions, but I think we can handle it.
Questions, comments? Anyone? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 I was Carrie, thank you very much. And Kobe, any comments?
Oh, yes, sir. My kind of sprinter's high. You know what that is?
Your wife watching?
Oh, yes, she is. She'll send me a text in a minute. So first, the Hydro Service, they have come out, um, they have completed work for Wells five, six, and ten. They're waiting on some components to come in for Wells one and three. Uh, those should hopefully be in this week. Uh, speaking to Kyle, they should have that, all that up and running, uh, next week. And by the time, when they do that, then we'll have appropriate training from Hydro Service, or Wells. Uh, the terminal update, I spoke to Cliff today. He will have someone here at our next meeting to give an update on. to give an update on that. Speaking of the day, he's around the two-week mark, they're finishing out some of the smaller stuff right now, so we will have someone here at our next meeting. Let's talk all the brotherhood. I did meet with one contractor on site last week, hopefully we'll get a bid from them. I've reached out to two others, waiting to, I spoke to them, they're supposed to call me back, they have not. I will reach out to them one more time and see, but hopefully we can get some quotes on the building and bring that before y'all. Number four, just a quick update on some bids that we have out. The first one is the 280B Utilities. That bid is due March 13th. The second one is the Library Repairs. That bid is due March 18th. The LDC, we have set the interview date for March 27th to review those firms and interview. And then the Effluent Line, we do have that out, and it is due April 14th. And then fifth is just a reminder, tomorrow workshop at 4:00 to discuss tourism.
Right. We'll go to Mr. Harris.
Main Street had a cleanup downtown last Thursday, right? Thursday it was, they said, they said they had over 40 volunteers down there. There were two youth groups down there, probably two dozen kids, half of those wearing tiaras, pageant girls and what have you, but they worked so hard, they replanted flowers, cleaned the streets, sprayed weeds, blew off the streets, dirtied up a lot of cars in the process, but, but it looks really good, and that's the kind of thing that Main Street gives back. And I know we give them money, but they definitely pull together and help us out with that downtown, so they did a wonderful job. Tobacco-free park signs are being put up, they might be finished, I don't know, I've seen some around, but they're making progress in the parks, and they look great. And mayor, next time that slope, that train slow rolls through here with that Amtrak bunch on it, I'll pop some kettle corn, and they'll stop. They'll stop in the Funiac, right?
Thank you, your honor. The plantings downtown, and don't forget the tree embutification, which part of that as well, so it's, it looks fantastic, it's very exciting. I'm glad we had some rain to help out with them to establish. And the Little League Parade, an opening day, was, was a blast. That was, that was an all-day event. The weather held off, thankfully, it looked like rain, but it, I mean, humid, but it was, it was good. It was a good day, so, you know, kudos to them, but that is all I have for you.
All right. Beerbaum?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
The same.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm kind of curious. Kobe, I think you might have just said that about Cliff, but, you know, before the holidays, we met, and the airport was supposed to be done by the end of January. Here it is, March, whatever, close to the 15th, and I think we need to reevaluate what is the issue, because I'm not very happy about, I wasn't happy then, but I thought, you know what, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, but I think we need to address this, so is that something you can put on the next agenda, either under all of us?
Yep. I have it under me. Like I said, I did speak to Cliff today, I did express that to him, you know, how we got to this point, the council back in January, so he's aware, and he should have someone here, and hopefully he will have the owner DDB here.
And then would you please make arrangements so that I could go out there and see for my own eyes this week with some of my staff?
Absolutely, just get with us, and Andre will assist.
And I got two more things. Clay, one of these is for you. Last year, we were in the budget cycle, and we wanted to discuss maybe taking back some of the CRA money, and this year it's going to be significant, so how much time do we need? Because I want to make sure that it gets on the agenda, and plenty of time to discuss again.
Starting this March workshop is what I would say.
Well, now we just moved it to April, so are you going to have enough time?
Yes.
We want to-
April gives us enough time, we got to have a 90-day notice, so we just need to do it before our first trim notices go out, so.
Because that's going by the county, right? The county and the CRA?
Well, no, this is our choice. We reduce it, the counties goes down automatically.
Okay. All right, so you're saying we'll have enough time?
Yes.
And then-
Yeah, April gives us until July. It would be, now look, we'd be a difference, probably over June.
Thank you. And then Kobe, what's the possibility that we can provide city employees? What is the possibility? I've gotten a letter or an email.
Yeah.
Do we give our employees discounts on our rental facilities? Because they went outside of this county to rent a facility that was cheaper in the neighboring county than renting their, our own here. They wanted to do it here, but they couldn't, they were not eligible for a discount, like we give not-for-profits. What is ours?
So currently, we do not. So we had, we did have an employee who asked there recently, I spoke to Mr. Atkinson about it, our policy in our rental agreement does not specify that. We're currently working on looking at and bringing back some resolutions related to rentals, not, we were not talking about that specifically, we were looking at the times, but we can bring that back, that's something the council would like to see, but we currently do not offer that.
I just don't think we can, we offer, I mean, we offer a lot to our employees, but I think this is something that's not really going to impact us significantly in allowing them a discount, that we would offer a not-for-profit the same discount, so if you wouldn't mind evaluating that to see. And how many do we have that really would utilize that?
It's according to our chief.
Benefit.
All right. Okay, I think that does it. We're going to adjourn, and then Mr. Kirby, if you and the Ennis family will come up and get this adjourned. This means adjourn.